I want to call the meeting for order of the City Council Special Meeting, which is also going to be a Town Hall. First up, I would like for the Clerk to take roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. And I still don't see the flag down here yet. So I'll take it upon myself to let's all taking a deep breath through our nose. Exhale out our mouth. And we're just going to just be very calm in this meeting today, okay? Meditation is always good, right? I can keep talk-- there he is, never mind, I don't have to do anymore. Once the flag is up here, I invite everyone in the audience and on camera to do the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, yeah, even I'm sure they're gonna be walking in in a minute.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Jennings and Miller.
Just need a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Need the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is going to be the public comments for items that's on the agenda. I'm thinking, oh, there's gonna be a public comment for the Town Hall, I'm thinking that is also worth questions. We'll do another public comment, but it's gonna be during the Town Hall discussion on opening closed streets, unless there's someone that would like to make a statement now, there would not be any dialogue back and forth regarding the opening of the closed streets. But otherwise, anything else that's on the agenda, please come to the microphone. You have three minutes to speak. It is just a one-way conversation, so if anybody would like to speak, you are not required to give your address, but your name would be really nice. Anyone that wants to speak? Come on up. Or come on down.
Do you have a portable mic?
Hi, I'm Tim Gladney.
What was your name, say it again.
Timothy Gladney.
Okay.
And I found out from my neighbor yesterday about this opening up Blackstone-Roseland to Southfield. I've been here 22 years, it's been closed that long that I know of. And we do not need that kind of access at that corner to Southfield Road. Too much opportunity for crime. And it's only a few neighbors in that section, and I'm pretty sure we're all on the same page. So, that's my comment, I don't want to see it open.
Thank you.
Mayor Garrett, City Council, good evening. My name is Lake Jones. My wife is back there, Linda Jones, we live at 18180 Roseland Boulevard in Lathrop Village. And from what we've heard, we object to the removal of the berm at Southfield and Roseland Boulevard. We ask that it remains closed. More than 20 years ago, Roseland was opened to Southfield, I'm gonna read this, because I want to be concise, I don't want to miss anything, and I don't want to waste your time or hours. More than 20 years ago, Roseland Boulevard was opened to Southfield Road, and the drivers cut through Roseland at breakneck speeds to beat the light at 12 in Southfield. The drivers faced zero stop signs between Bloomfield and Southfield, making Roseland the Indianapolis 500 of Lathrop Village. To stop this dangerous nuisance, several of the neighbors, quite before I moved in, did the legwork, they sat out there, they logged, they kept data of cars going by and traffic speeds, et cetera, and brought them to the City Council and got the relief that they were seeking to get that berm put up there. Present day, please know that we will be unsafe if you reopen that intersection. Yes, there are neighbors who enjoy residential life on Roseland, and within 200 feet of Southfield, there are people who are disabled, there are disabled people, there are children, there are seniors. And they need to have safety in that area. Your vote to approve opening the intersection at Roseland and Southfield is an affront to their safety and to your constituents. Let's add onto the volume of tra-- let's not add onto the volume of traffic near a 12-mile road. The traffic is so heavy there that the Michigan Department of Transportation calculates that approximately 39,000 vehicles travel through there each day. This is not just sentiment, it's directly from the Michigan Department of Transportation information. When you consider the history, I shared the residents of Roseland and the data of MDOT, the right decision is to keep the berm open. We ask you to please consider that, please keep it open, don't consider closing it, because it's a, it's what we need in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Can someone in the-- sorry, you can come up. Bill, I'm about to call him by. Bill, will you take it over to the lady in the red coat, please? Oh, no, you're good? Okay, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Roger Scott, and I moved into my home in 1990. When I moved in, San Quentin, where it comes up to Lathrop Boulevard, was closed off. They had stuck some cement in there, sticking up like, to keep people from driving through. Well, over the time, I've had two different gardens there. I have a rock garden there, and it's all finished off. It takes quite a bit of work in summer to keep it up and attractive. There's, from what I see, on the fence line between my neighbors, there must be 20 feet, assuming the fence line that meets up across the street, there must be 20 feet from there to the street level in Southfield. And, well, it would just be a shame to see that go. It's a nice, quiet place. I have a park bench out there for anybody that wants to take a seat. The guy Kitty Corner in Lathrop Village, for me, has done quite a bit of improvements to his area. And there's also, it could be a traffic hazard if they opened it up, because for some reason there's a two-and-a-half-foot dip from the Lathrop side down into the Southfield side. And it's quite abrupt. In fact, they ought to take a look at putting in strips on the sidewalk that does go through, sidewalk only goes through on one side, the opposite side of the street from me. Put some of those rubber strips in there, because it's quite steep in such a short period. But it would just be a shame to see that go, you know? And I enjoy working on it over the years, ever since I moved in. I took the cement out and buried it in there, and there's quite a number of improvements to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else coming up?
Question.
Oh, there's one in the--
Is this the only time you want to comment, or there's item 6C where you want Town Hall discussion?
So we're gonna have another opening at the Town Hall portion.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Gabriel Gonzalez, I live off Catalpa Road. I'm not sure if you can hear me well.
Yep.
First, I want to say thank you for the consideration of, you know, from my understanding, this was mainly primarily for safety and for emergency vehicles and access to us. We really appreciate it. I wanted to make a comment now, because I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to stay for the discussion due to being on call. I guess my main thing is when I look at these situations, I know we all enjoy Lathrop for privacy reasons, and for the neighborhood we've all come to love, but what comes to mind for me is, you know, with these types of situations, is how can we enact this in a way that it would benefit us, keep those things we hold, you know, dear to our hearts in regards to Lathrop, but at the same time, how can we financially find ourselves making this plan without it coming into different problems along the road? Some of these roads have been gravelled, dirt, we find that they haven't really been upkept for some time. And when we look at it, I can use examples of being cited for blocked sidewalks, which some of these sidewalks are unfinished. So I do think that this plan initially to me brings some concern in a sense that would this financially fall upon the citizens of Lathrop Village? Will this impact other budgetary plans we have? And another concern would be the infrastructure of the city in a sense that a lot of these places that we have here, and these nooks and crannies to the city, are not well lit. So opening up access would have general concerns of deep dark blackness amongst some of the residents, not just me, but for people who like to walk at night, which we have some wonderful Lathrop and Southfield residents who have daily and weekly walks, who I've gotten to know and come to loving dearly over the city lines. But now we have them walking and traversing at all hours of the day, and my concern would be just general safety. If we open this up, will we be, you know, addressing some of these lighting issues, these dangerous turns, dangerous access, and just the general public when we see traffic from the highway section, from even the residential sections? And how we can approach that both financially and in a manner where, you know, we would find good even flow with not too much disruption of kind of what people have been sold about with Lathrop Village, but also without affecting certain residents to making yet more policies to kind of create a new situation to solve, and we're still working on many other things that we've planned in the past. Again, thank you if it was mainly for safety and for certain emergency situations, we all obviously would like to have those individuals properly cared for in a prompt manner, but that would be part of my concerns, is there comes a lot of opening these roads when, particularly Catalpa, I don't know how you're gonna widen that road, and some of these roads may not fit two-way traffic. So, might be a little bit more to consider than just opening up the roads.
Thank you.
Appreciate you for listening to me today.
Is there anyone else coming up to the microphone? Or, he's gonna bring it to you.
Hi, Kim Hodge, 275-800 California Southeast. Two things, one, I'm a little disappointed, because I thought this was only a Town Hall about the opening of the streets, and I have to leave in half hour too. So normally, I would be listening to whatever's being proposed and commenting afterwards, but I don't know if I'll have time either. So I'll just say that I am against anything that increases traffic flow among our area. I think that we have a lot of traffic up and down Lathrop especially, where I walk every day, and I don't think the residents there, or even down by me, really want any additional traffic. There's a lot of speeding, a lot of people going through stop signs already, so I think that this is about emergency vehicles only, but I don't know, since I haven't heard it. So, I'm saying nothing that increases traffic of the general public would I be for.
Thank you. The reason why this meeting was turned into a special meeting is because we did have a meeting on, supposed to have it, what, last Wednesday? Unfortunately, I was out sick, another councilperson could not come, and it was just decided that we cancel it, and then rescheduled a special meeting portion, which I foresee that we probably would go through quickly, but, you know, I don't know what our time looks like any longer, so, that's why it was postponed to today. So I thought it was already published and posted, sorry. Does anyone--
I just can't--
He's gonna bring the microphone for you.
Oh, I don't--
My ears are clogged, so I'm--
My question is, though, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm here for the Town Hall meeting. I know there's a lot of my neighbors here for the Town Hall meeting, that's our concern. Can't we do the Town Hall first, and you have your special meeting afterwards? Not that I don't care about you, but it would be a lot easier for all of us.
Agreed.
Well, we could, and then we could just go through what our agenda is expeditiously, seeing that we've had the information in front of us for at least two weeks, so it should be rather easy for us to go through. So, it should be easy for us to go through, but I will confer with--
Can I make a motion to move the Town Hall up on the agenda?
Somebody has to make--
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there a discussion? There was a discussion. So, now I forgot what it was, so it's, I will confer with you all in what you all think that should be done. I would like to see a robust conversation around it, and also give you all the opportunity to really respond, and I think that if we have something afterwards, it kind of restricts us, but that's, that's the only reason why I would say, to keep it the way it is, because I would like to see the conversation going. But that's just, I'm open. Anyone else have a--
Let's just go with the, the plan, let's just go with, we can have postpone our second option, what is that, I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda in front of me.
Yeah.
We can postpone the special assessment role, and then just have the Town Hall, and we can reconvene.
Move Town Hall--
Are you saying reconvene, or do it after the Town Hall?
You said do it after--
Yeah, okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So, we will be moving the, the agenda where C would be A, and then everything else will be moving behind it. So the way that, is there any public comment still for, yes, sir?
My wife informed me that this vote, my opposing comment was, please keep roads in the way--
Oh, I understood what you meant. I have it next to your name, closed. So is there any other comments for anything that's on the agenda? This will be the special assessment, the sidewalk program. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jason Hammond. I just, I want to hear what the plan is first. I think a lot of people that I've been talking to are jumping to conclusions about things like every single road that's closed is gonna be opened, and that's part of the plan, or only certain roads, or, and there's no clear information yet about the intention of why the request even came up first. So, my, personally, I'm just trying to keep an open mind about what the reasons for the requests are to be taken into consideration. I'm curious about what potential costs the city might have to incur regardless of which decision is made, whether to open roads or not open roads. So I would just encourage people to keep an open mind, hear what the plan is, and then hopefully the council will come to a conclusion that is consistent with what the residents want, but also supports whatever the intention of the fire department or any other entity that is supporting this request, the reason why they brought it to the city in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so then we'll go into the Town Hall.
Pam, I think, went to do that.
Okay, we're gonna work on the air, just in case someone else is chivering. So, we will go to the Town Hall discussion. I will gladly hand this over to Chief Menifee of the, the chief of the fire department, Southfield Fire Department. Derek, can you, Bill, can you give him the microphone?
So, good evening, good evening.
We did reserve the front seat, if you guys wanted to move down there to see the presentation, just so that you're able to do that.
She's like, yeah, are you supposed to be up here?
So I'm Fire Chief Johnny Menifee. I just want to clarify why I'm here, kind of my preamble. I'm not here to say, just say, open up the roads. I'm here to give you some information of a situation that has come up, and me as doing a risk analysis of why I'm saying that I, that we should have some emergency vehicle access in, in the city of Lathrop Village. So I'm asking you, as the gentleman spoke, to keep an open mind, and kind of to hear from the presentation of what I have, what I have going, and, and then be happy to answer any of your questions that you, that you may have. Agree? Does that sound, all right, all right, so it's not so hostile in here, so, so I'm not, I'm not the enemy, I'm here for you, right? So, let's, let's get started. So the history, the history and how we got here, I think it's, it's good to give you a history and a background of what I'm talking about, where we're, and where we're going. I do better when I move around, so please excuse me if I step in front of you for a bit. So Louise, Louise Lathrop, back in, in 1924, we're talking almost 100 years here, right? You know, got 1,000 acres, got 1,000 acres from the township of Southfield to create Lathrop Village, you know, so forth. And when we talk about, they talked about, oh, thank you, you know, an exclusive residential community. We're talking about to close off certain streets and traffic in areas known as superblocks. These are the big major roads that, that cut through to cut down traffic, and the vehicles are allowed to do limited in traffic. This, this was, this was something that was talked about 100 years ago, and I just want to make sure that we understand the mindset. I mean, these things have been here 100 years, I get it, but, you know, we have to start thinking about 20, 20, 2023 when we do things. I mean, the run volume, the other things that are, that I'm gonna talk about, you know, weren't around back in, in 1924, so keep that in mind. So, fire protection, we've been, we've been doing the fire EMS in Lathrop Village since 1960. 60, 63 years of great dedicated service to the city of Lathrop Village. So, back in, let's say back in September of last year, you know, there's a, there's an act, the Public Act 399, water, the water permit, it's about fire flow. You have to come up with the fire flow, and this should be, last time we did it was in 2017, reliability study. So we were asked to come in and to test the hydrants, to test and make sure that they're working okay. We had five breaks, we had five breaks, five breaks in the system. Your system's old, you know, let's just call it, call it what it is. So, your elected officials and myself have to decide what to do, have to decide what to do with, with what's going on with the system concerning the water structure. Now, we monitor, we have, we have very good data, we monitor our response time, and the response times are what it is. So the national average is that line you see, it's about six minutes, six minutes of the time. That's where we are per the time of day. You can kind of see there's spikes, there's spikes when, when we have, like, you know, the morning rush hour, we have the, the going home traffic at night, but we're above that. We're above, our average response time is a, is above six minutes right now, you know, and that, and I like to get that time down, I like to get that information down. Sorry if I'm over here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in front of some of you, because, and give them, and give them that, but that's where we are statistically with our, with our response time right now.
Just in the city of Lathrop?
That's this, everything I'm giving you today is just Lathrop. We're doing, Southfield Fire Department's doing 16,000 calls a year. I'll give you the numbers for just Lathrop, so, because that's what we're talking about, and that's what we're concerned with tonight. And my, like I said, and keep in mind, my job is to give you the information, and then you, with your power, will tell the elected officials of what you want to do. But I cannot not give you the information, the things that I see, and so forth, and so that's where I'm staying, that's our, that's our numbers. So we run the risk for fire emergencies. Fires doubles every seven minutes, you know? So, that's a big thing, and then with exposures, and exposures to your neighbor's house and other things. So we have, those things that we have to watch, as well as the medical emergencies, not talking about just, just the fires about these roads, we're talking about the medical emergencies. You know, the hard, time is muscle, so when you, when you actually have a heart attack or you have a stroke, those things are just like traumas, like you hear about, like the golden hour. Anybody heard about the golden hour? The golden hour? Same thing for heart attacks, same thing dealing with strokes, you have that golden hour. The longer it takes for us to get into the city, just as much longer us to get out and get to the hospital. This, this is, this is one of those risk things also that we talk about. It's not just a fire issue and what's going on, it's also about us being able to get to you quicker than not. I got 29 years in the fire department. I spent a lot of time at 12 in Evergreen. I spent over half my career at that fire station. I ran more calls in Lathrop Village probably than any, probably any one of our firefighters that are responding there now. So I've been through all of it, I've been through the change of the street signs, you know, there, I've been just changing through all the roads that were once opened, then I drove one day, and then they were closed, you know, and how long it takes me to reach a person, like on Morningside, compared to how it is if that, if that access was open or not. But I've, I've actually experienced it, I'm not just talking from a place of just as a fire chief. I, like I said, I've, I've ran there over half my career. So, this is what's been sent out. Now, I prioritize this list. This is a list of, of the access I would like for emergency vehicles in that order. There is no access on the west side of, of Lathrop Village to get in at all currently. You know, you have to go to 12 Mile, you have to go to 11 Mile to do it, and if I deal with 11 Mile with 696, I gotta do the, the famous across the freeway, the, the Michigan turnaround to get, to get there. But these, these are the priorities of how, how I'll get there. And also like this, if there's a problem with your water system and problems with your hydrants, I gotta go to a Southfield hydrant. That's another reason why I want, I want to look at open, open to these hydrants, because I have to go across that imaginary line to get to a different, to get to a different hydrant. But the, but that's, I did this in order of what streets, now this isn't every street, but these are, these are the priority list that I would like to, you to consider. Here's the run volume. So we did 495 calls last year, 96 fires, 399 medicals. Now, because of HIPAA reasons, this isn't exactly where the incident occurred, you know, but you, because I know there's some on this map that are outside it, but this gives you a real good look of, of the medicals that are, that are here. And these numbers are going up. You know, I'll tell you the statistics about how much we're going up, but these, this is an act of what happened last, actually, I'm sorry, this is, this is, this is the 2022, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain, it's the 2022, my mistake on the, on the presentation, though, but these are 2022 numbers for you. You can see they're pretty much, it's, it's a broad area, there's, you know, it's across the city, north and south. So, it's about reducing the time, reducing the time for, you know, hose lanes, and I can trust it, and trust, and that we can trust the hydrant system in Lathrop. If not, I gotta, I gotta look at doing other things that, that's gonna keep, keep me and keep us off the news of a tragedy that's, that's happening. So, I just took a, I just took a, an area like Morningside, this is kind of, you know, I, I once had a gentleman that, that had a, that had a heart attack in this area, and that's why I picked this area, because it's, it's dear to me. And, you know, the, the station's up at 12 in Evergreen there, just, just west, just west of 12 Mile. And I did this route, that was my, that was my route, the six-minute route, is what, is what I had there, and that's, that's normally what it takes if it's not rush hour, how, what time would it take me to get there. If we do the 12 Mile, it's five, it's, it's, it's five minutes is what, is what is telling us that, how long it takes. If we were to open up that one section here, you're looking at two minutes. You know, this is the time, that's, that's three and a half, four minutes of a person having a heart attack, having a stroke. So I wanna, I want to lessen that time, you know, that I can, to, to get to the person to provide them the care that they need. I get it, I understand people like their quiet streets and so forth, but at what risk? If this is an acceptable risk to you, three, four minutes, okay, you're gonna decide that, but I can't, I can't-- that, but I can't, I can't stand up in front of the city and swear to take an oath to protect the lives and property of, of this great city and not give you the information. It's not, like, I get it, because I say, I've received a lot of calls on this and I know this isn't popular, but I think it's, it's valuable and you seeing, seeing what we're, what we're proposing here. So probabilities, eight percent increase in run, run calls to Lathrop, nineteen percent in fire calls. That, that's a real number and those numbers are going up. People are living longer, you know, so there's, there's more that's happening. And I looked, I looked in account with, with, with COVID and people have more at home, but these are, these are on average, this is what's happening. You know, there's a lot more activity going on in Lathrop, but an eight percent increase in your run volume, you know, that, that's huge, nineteen percent. So like I said, it's up to me to determine what is, what are we going to do about this? What are the risks? What's the plan? What, what are we going to do to try to maneuver past this and with it? I believe that there's, there's some, there's some common ground that, that we can have here, you know, with it. We have to, we have to look at the life safety issue and the property conservation with it. I mean, you know, the, the houses in Lathrop and when they were, when they were built and so forth, they're built a little better, they kind of more, more plaster instead of this new drywall and all this, they last a longer, but they burn, they burn, they burn deep, a lot more, a lot more overhaul and so forth that firefighters have to, have to do. It's something that we have, we have to, to really think about. These are some, these are just some options and some, some other things to think about, you know, when you do it. These are actually in different places, the top one, I believe this is Ferndale. You know, they actually have grass pavers over that where they can actually drive over and, and get, and get to it. You have the one-way, you have one-way type street access to, to different places. You have siren-activated gates are very popular in a lot of communities that, that the fire department and police department have access to. They hit the siren, gate goes up, they go on through, and gate closes. That's a, that's probably a possibility. You have, I know in Southfield we're doing these, they're, they're out in Detroit, but you, you have the, the cushions or the chicanes, you know, where it slows traffic down and so forth. My point is there are options, you know? I, I think you, you see the increase of a call volume that, that's happening in Lathrop. I don't think these, I don't think these runs are going to get lower. If I take, I guess, my fifty-five to eighty-five-year-old, year-old, my call volume for my fifty-five to eighty-five is eighty percent of my calls and that number's not going down by statistics. That number's going to keep going up. Yes, sir?
One question, you've got the property at Twelve and Evergreen. What other station do you pull from to come to Lathrop Village? And why did Southfield wait so long to put another property closer to Lathrop Village? In their thirty-eight years, one fire station.
Okay.
How much money do we pay every year?
You pay six hundred and seventy thousand.
What's, what's the second property that we would pull from? Let's say you're over at Lathrop Boulevard, would you pull from?
Nine in Southfield.
Okay. What about, what about the Four Mile and Route?
Well.
Is that still Southfield? No, my, my question is.
You had a lot of, wait, wait, okay, wait, let's, let's take.
Chief, you haven't finished the presentation first and then we'll go open it up for the questions and answers, okay?
I mean, you can, we can, we can get, we can get to the questions. I appreciate it, ma'am. Right, no, it's all right.
Oh, I thought you were like, I just wanted to.
But. I just, but that was a lot of questions there, so let's back up tape one, one at a time. We pull from all the stations, you know? We're the busiest fire department in the county, you know? So we pull from, from, from every, every department. We have two on Twelve Mile, we got one at Twelve and Evergreen, we got one in Twelve and just the west side of Telegraph, we got two on Nine Mile and, and the fire headquarters is next to the high school, A and T on Tenonlosser. But we pull, we, we pull from those. It's, I mean, fire stations aren't cheap, right? I mean, they're, they're not cheap and that's not something that we.
Last question to you was, what was the number one intersection in Oakland County for traffic accidents and everything for twenty-five years?
Well, I mean, you got eleven, you got eleven in Southfield is one of them, is one of them. I mean, we got, we got eleven in Southfield, yeah, we got, you got twelve in Southfield, you got, you got twelve in Telegraph. Those are, those are, are big stations, yes.
Are those statistics included in your run statistics?
What?
Runs to those intersections or intersections?
Yes, yes.
No, because I want you to switch. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to stay still.
Maybe that's better, maybe it was me.
No, I want to like.
They want your microphone.
Oh, they want my microphone. Is this, okay.
I think you can unloop it a bit and walk around if you need to.
I'll, I'll leave it. I'll talk later. How about you gentlemen over there?
Yep, we're doing that right now.
Okay.
Just one, you'll be next.
Hey Chief, thanks for the presentation. A resident of Lathrop for over thirty-five years, I can understand that your option number one, you know, for San Jose coming in off of Evergreen, that makes sense, but I'm having a hard time understanding all the streets that butt up to Lathrop Boulevard, because I would still think you would either come down, you'd either come down Southfield Road or you'd come down Twelve Mile Road down Lathrop Boulevard. I used to be a resident on Lathrop Boulevard and the cars back then, even with the roads closed, the traffic was crazy and this is going back twenty-five years ago when I was there. I'm on the other side now, but that's, I guess that's my question, you know, why would you want those roads opened up if you would still be coming down Twelve Mile or Southfield to service that district? Thank you.
So let me make sure I understand your.
Right there, the first map, first one.
There you go. I understand, give me, give me, give me a chance, I mean.
There we go.
Just take your gun out and shoot it. Gotta love the gun.
Maybe you're in protected view, maybe that's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Make it smaller.
Okay.
If you do control alt and scroll down, it should make it. See, you're in protected view up at the top, so if you enable that, there you go.
Well, I think I, I just want to make sure. Okay. So I just want to make sure you're saying, you're saying from Lathrop here, what I'm talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay. So when me and my command staff put this together about, about the places, we didn't, there's a lot more closures in here. And so if I have to catch, if I have to go over and catch a Southfield hydrant, I didn't want the, the stretches that we have that, for a supply line to be as long. So I went with every other street, but there's, I wanted to have something down here if I had to, because I have, I have, I have, yeah, I have, I have fire trucks going to be coming up from this angle, I have fire trucks going to be coming down from here, I have fire trucks going to be coming down from here. Normally, who's going to be given the water supply is not going to be the, not going to be the truck coming from Twelve and Evergreen is, is here. So I have to make sure that I'm able to capture water over here in these hydrants because, like I said, when I tested the height, I had five breaks, right? The system, I can't necessarily count on the system that's going to work for me. I need a Plan B, C, and D. Well, I want to make sure I answered, I'm, I'm gonna answer this.
So it's not so much logistics tomorrow, the infrastructure?
Right. I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily have to do a supply line that's going to go three or four blocks. I need, I need some intersections that I can, that I can catch a hydrant if I need to.
So Chief, if I understand you correctly, the ones along east of Lathrop over here, here, are because of the hydrant issues?
That's a main, that, yeah, that's a major concern.
Okay. So what, is there anything being done to address the hydrant problems that we have?
Yeah, I think they're going to get to that after me.
Okay.
I think that's, that's, that's going to happen, tell you what your, what the plan is.
Okay. That was my question.
Isn't there somebody over here? Do you have your hands up?
Chief, what's the, what's the fail safe right now? If, if one of the supply lines or the hyenas fail along Lathrop Boulevard, what, what is the plan right now? I believe we spoke on the phone and there's a tanker truck.
I have, I have secured a tanker from another city that if I get a confirmed fire, I have a tanker that's coming, that's going to supply backup water. I'm carrying seven hundred and fifty gallons on each truck, but that may not be enough to put out a house, a house fire. If a house is really involved more than a room and content, that's not going to put it out. So I have a, I have a tanker from another city coming to, to give us water to supply.
We can't hear you. So I have to ask everyone, unfortunately, to come to this microphone because we can't pick up the audio from the chief, so if you have a question, if you could come up to the middle unless you have an issue with access to getting up here. Let us know.
Okay.
Sorry.
That better, that's better. And I've hit all my shots, I, I just got tested, I'm clear.
All right, Chris Clea, twenty-eight-year resident, I live on Lathrop Boulevard. I've raised two kids here, and well, my seventeen-year-old's still in the house. If the, if the question is about the quality of hydrants, we just put a three-year millage in to replay, do our infrastructure, which I believe is getting fire hydrants and water mains and everything. So we should be solving that already. If it's about time to get there, sorry, I'm biased, but thank you, Roger, we're not going to improve our response time on the right side, but I understand what you're talking about on one and six there, five, whatever it is, I can't tell. I'll empathize if the response time is trying to get to there and I'll delegate to the people who live in those areas, but I'll empathize and say, I don't want traffic there. We have speeders, we have people that run stop signs, we have traffic problems on my street, Lathrop Boulevard, that I don't want to increase in any way, shape, or form. And I don't see this solving it, okay? And with six ninety-six, we're a year south, it's already a mess on, I'm going to say the Calif, it's Catalpa, I think, is the second road, road north, where my, my neighbors complain of cut-through traffic. Roseland, they don't want cut-through traffic up there. They already said they cut it off fifty years ago because of cut-through traffic. We have a problem with cut-through traffic trying to go around stoplights. I don't want more of it coming from Southfield and Lathrop to get down to six ninety-six going east, and I don't want it coming from six ninety-six west up Lathrop Boulevard. Yeah, there's a do not turn right during rush hour traffic, nobody listens to it. They go through there, they come up, they'll go up there and right, because it's going to be the fastest way to get there. We have mapping, everybody has an iPhone, every use, you open up these streets to traffic, everybody will find it, their phone will tell them, this is the quickest way to get there, we're going to suffer for it. So I don't want it. And I can keep going, I can look for other things in here and find them that I put in my notes, but this isn't floating for me. But thank you. I appreciate you're looking for our, well, for us.
Yes, and.
Don't want it.
If I can just interject just a second here, this is information for you guys, this is not a decision being made tonight, and the whole purpose of the town hall is to hear your opinion. If we didn't want your opinion, we would just make decisions without you and that's not what we want to do. We want to make sure that our citizens are heard. So I get the frustration in your voice, but don't shoot the messenger up here trying to bring the information to you so that you're informed and, and can help council make a decision.
I thank you for your service and everything, I appreciate all you're doing. So if I came off as a passion.
Nope, nope, nope. I. I, I get that everybody is, you know, passionate about the streets that you live in, the culture that you live in and all of that, I just wanted to make that comment.
I'm just, I want to, I live at the corner of Lathrop Boulevard. I live at the corner of Lathrop Boulevard and Golden Gate. I have a four-way stop that I can see from my kitchen window, my living room window. I have a four-way stop two blocks down that I can see from the kitchen window. I have a two-way stop at California and Golden Gate that I can see. I can't even tell you the traffic that goes shooting through those stop signs. We've got little kids in our neighborhood, not a lot anymore, but we do have them. I can't even imagine what it would be like if, and I'm, without disparaging anybody, if the people that live on the other side of Lathrop Boulevard in Southfield have access to cut through to get to Southfield Road, because it would be so much easier for them to do that than it would be to go down to Twelve Mile, which is their cause right now, which they have to do. Also, Catalpa has one house on it. To cut off that, the thing, I, I don't even understand it. There's one house on Catalpa. And what would happen is, because it's a clear shot to get to the Southfield, Oakland County Medical Place, it's a clear shot to get to all the soccer fields, the traffic that would be coming through to get to Catalpa on this tiny little road, and the gentleman that was here before lives on it also, I, I just, I'm just amazed that that's even an option to close these streets. We, and also, I do invite you, everybody here, if you would like to watch people run the stop signs, I'll turn my couch around, you can sit in my bay window, I'll give you coffee, and you can count the number of stop sign runners we have. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Dennis Kingsbury, I live, I don't live anywhere near there, I live in San Jose. What, what's the connection on the, between opening the streets and the, the fire hydrants? And why do you need the street to be open for a fire hydrant?
Because it's a different system. I mean, Lathrop is a closed system, you know? So I can, I can get out, if I get out to these hydrants, these are, these are hydrants that I, I made to get to as for Plan B. You know, your hydrants may work, they may, they may not have the tanker, but if I need a hydrant, I know that I can go to those hydrants and those are trusted hydrants. So what I, what we've done is that when we come to you and prioritize these, is that we put them kind of every other opening so that our, our relays that we have to do with pumpers for how long the stretches will be to get water, that it wouldn't be as long.
But can't you just carry the hose over the, over the?
It doesn't work like that. I mean, when you, when you have five-inch, six-inch hoses and now you're putting, you know, hundreds of gallons of water through them, you can't move those hoses once they're, once they're, there's water in them. They won't, they can't be moved.
But there's not water, there's not water in them while they're being moved.
Well, once you, once you do and put water in them, I mean, that's, that's it, but.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lori Hagan. I am the only house on Catalpa in Lathrop Village.
Thank you.
My neighbor's driveway is across the street from me and, but his address is actually on Lathrop Boulevard. I can tell you the increase in traffic, if you were to open up Catalpa, would be immense because I've seen, I've been there twelve years and I have seen on the average five or six cars a day that pull up, even though it says dead-end street at the end of my street, they still think they can get through, pull up, turn around in my driveway and have to go back around. Other, other traffic, tons of cars a day coming from the, from the Southfield side trying to get through. And because Catalpa runs all the way down through to Royal Oak, many people will be using that as trying to get around taking Eleven Mile or Twelve Mile. Now, where my, where Catalpa comes out and joins Lathrop Boulevard, it is not a ninety-degree intersection. It is a hard forty-five degrees intersection if you want to turn south and it's a, you know, a hundred and. Yeah, thank you. Degree angle if you want to turn north. When I first thought that this was going to be about trucks being able to get through from the east side, there's no way that a truck would be able to make that left-hand turn onto Lathrop Boulevard if they were coming from the east. But I don't think Southfield Fire Department has any. But I don't think Southfield Fire Department has any stations on the east side that would wanna be coming from that direction to get to Lathrop Village. Is that-
Well, we don't, we don't have stations over here to the, to the east over here, but they may have to come. They may be, they may be coming from over here. I understand that you're, you're technically here, correct?
Correct.
Right. I know, but you're not the only place here. I mean, you know, why this, 'cause if, if we don't, we can't get to this hydrant, we're gonna have to try to go here, up here, or, or down here to, to these hydrants over here. It's not about just your house, it's over here. And, and look, my, I get it, I understand the traffic and the increase like this. My job is to tell you and to show you the risk. Here is the risk. Here is what could possibly happen. Yeah, it's all fine if it's not your house, but what if it is? Like I said-
Yep.
We, we've increased nineteen, nine, you know, nineteen percent in, in the fire calls, you know, here. I mean, that, that's what it's, that's what it's about, to say, hey, here is what's happening, here is what's predictable. If it's, if it's predictable, it may be preventable. But I have to have a better plan on what to do if something happens. I get it, you're the only house there, I know exactly where your house is. But it's about, once we pass your house and, and where we have to go to-
And I appreciate that. This is, this is not a me problem, it's a Lathrop Village problem. And again, you're talking that it's more about the infrastructure, it's about being able to get to the fire hydrants. There's a fire hydrant at the base of my driveway, and if that didn't work, I can only imagine what you'd have to do to try and run a line to somewhere else. And the same thing for other people living up and down the way. But again, that's an infrastructure thing. I don't know that the issue, I don't know that the solution, I understand you're looking for the best solution. I don't know that that is opening up the streets to be able to reach a fire hydrant so much as it is fixing the infrastructure in Lathrop Village so that we don't have to worry about that fire hydrant isn't gonna give you what you need to put out a fire.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Gonzalez, I'm her neighbor, I live on Catalpa. You know, I come with this with an open mind. Just a few questions. Have you ever faced a situation like this before? Did it come with success, timeline, cost, any road bumps that you may face with this, that we may be aware of, that would come into play on something that may lean on us as residents of Catalp, of Lathrop Village in terms of cost, what to expect? Have you dealt with these types of situations where you're opening up roads that have kind of-
Well, I mean, I'm talking about emergency vehicle access. I understand, I mean, it's, what I hear is, I hear is, just open up the roads.
No, but I mean, just get rid of the block. Just get rid of the block, look at the road, look at how everything's set up in the city. What do, what comes with that logistically, when you analyze kind of physically what you're dealing with at these dead ends?
Well, we're still just in the talking phase, right? I mean, we, we, we started, I started looking at, started looking at trying to price out some of these different ways of possibilities of, of, of how we can, how we can do this, right? I mean, you have siren-activated gates, you know, you have different, different avenues on how to, how to, how to get there with this. But I don't have any prices, that's gonna be up to the city and how the city decides to-
Well, I guess I'm mainly here to say, thank you for your presentation. Obviously, I'm more for the safety of everybody, but for the city, I would request kind of a detailed look at those things, that some of these roads, when we look at them, on paper, this is a beautiful presentation of how to analyze something, how to solve the problem on your end, but I think the biggest roadblocks that you have is not the physical roadblock, but it's just, I don't think it's possible at Catalpa without really knowing a lot of details on how that's gonna affect the costs and how we're gonna get it done reasonably. And it might be a barrier to, to me agreeing with in the sense that, I've been asking for that road to be fixed for quite some time. I've had a truck bang into the dead end on one end, and I had a kid go sixty miles an hour, which I had to go take care of until the EMT got there. I see a lot of problems, I've had people get stuck in the mud on both corners, hit the signs twice. She may see my face a little bit too often complaining about it, but I've been talking about just general safety, that road in general, and some of the other ones down the line, that's an R problem that we need to get fixing, and this whole scenario is an uphill battle to me. But I appreciate you coming in with this presentation, it just, that's the one roadblock I see for me mentally is. It's gonna be really difficult, but we want it to happen for you. So, thank you.
I'm Joy Powell, and I live on, excuse me, California Drive Northeast, near Golden Gate. And I know there's going to be an immediate response to why you can't do this, which will probably be cost. But we have solved the road problem, that's been solved for a really long time. And I'm not sure it's the solution to a problem that has to do with water hydrants. I, I'm very naive on the topic of water hydrant infrastructure, but it seems there must be, if we think outside the box, some way, I don't know, we share school systems with Southfield, why can't we add another hydrant over, connect the system? I know you said it was a closed system, well, why is it? Does it have to be so in every, on every street that it's a closed system? Are, are there some other solutions that directly address the problem, which is the fire hydrant? Having really nothing to do with the road, it's the location of the fire, fire hydrant. That's my comment. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Gabriela Murphy. I live here now since nineteen seventy-six, so this are forty-seven years. And not once, now it may be tomorrow or the next day, not once came the fire truck down my street. Even though I'm apparently not even in the list of closures or openings, I'm on San Rosa, close to the barriers. And when we first bought the house, it was a great reason to buy that house, because we had three young children, and they were only the people who were living on that end of street. And that was very, very beneficial to us. Now, I have an eye. The street has a fire hydrant directly on the side of San Rosa from Lathrop, not even on Southfield. Perhaps that's why you don't open it, but I can tell you the traffic will be ridiculous, even in the little streets, not only on the bigger like Catalpa or so, even on the little streets. I see so many cars coming down, have to turn around because there's a barrier. And if it is open, kids will run into the street, we will have more accidents, or almost accidents, and I don't think it is worth it. Thank you.
If I speak too loudly, I'm sorry. It's, uh, comes from the fact that I haven't been speaking lately, but I was a singer and tend to try and project. I wanna eliminate one falsehood that's been going, floating around. And that was that, the, the streets on the Lathrop, off of Lathrop Boulevard to the Southfield side, some of those were open ten years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago. That's all nonsense. I've been here forty-five years and they've been closed the entire time. If, to me, if it's a water main issue that has, first off, I have a fire hydrant in my yard, okay? If it's a matter of the pressure, not being able to take the pressure for those hydrants, it, it's affecting the water main, I'd say, let's consider the option to fix the water main. If it really is a, a, a cut-through issue for, for access, then I would say minimize it and gate it. And by minimizing it, I'm saying maybe one between eleven and twelve. I can understand the Evergreen things, it's not even residential on the other side. One factor I haven't heard mentioned by anybody, I mean, I live on Lathrop Boulevard, my house directly backs up to houses on Southfield. We have a friendly relationship, we have the gate, I have a double thing for going back and forth with them if there's any reason to do that. But I gotta tell you, all those houses along the, but our houses on Lathrop Boulevard are about two hundred thousand dollars less expensive. And you open, open access, you may begin to affect our property values on Lathrop Boulevard. And as a person who's getting set to retire, I don't wanna see my property value plummet because we're suddenly equalizing with Southfield. Okay? That's probably all I got to say, but I, it's, I understand water pressure. I'm a, I'm a mechanical engineer myself. Was a program manager for building a billion-dollar complex out in Auburn Hills. So I'm familiar with mechanics and pressure and so on. The fact is, if there's a pressure problem, let's fix the pressure problem, not go over to use a system in Southfield 'cause it's newer as a backup. Let's get both of them on the same par when it comes to water pressure. That's it. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit emotional about that. You can tell I would sort of, by the way, I've checked with other Lathrop residents, there's nobody on Lathrop Boulevard that would vote yes on this, nobody.
Hi, good evening. My name is Krista McClure. I'm actually a new resident of less than one year, and I think where that red dot is on the southeast side of 696 and Southfield Road would be like right where my house is. And so my question, I'm neutral, right? I believe that all people have an equal opportunity to life, and if you have to move to get water appropriately there, I understand the need for that. I think there's a greater need, just from my understanding, having moved in this city, have already really started to do work and work with the civil engineer to like, understand like the main water line that runs, you know, right there south of 696, the great need for an infrastructure around our water system. And so I would ask that the city of Lathrop Village really consider a true study of that in addition to our actual infrastructure as far as like our roads. I can only imagine, again, if that dot is where I think it is by my house, there's only actually one home on that, on that, on that street, it's Meadowbrook. I'm on Coral Gables and Meadowbrook, so I sit at the corner. My only fear would be like others have conveyed, certainly there are folks that blow through that stop sign, like what stop sign, like it's not even there, that's fine, we can tolerate that. But to have the freeway, 696 literally is exiting right where the entry point of Meadowbrook would open. And I can tell you right now, my house already shit, like shakes because of the semi-trucks that come off of the road. So there has to be, I think, some level of partnership and study through the, the interstates, right? Through 696 and the Southfield Road. I think before we consider looking at the infrastructure of whether it be Meadowbrook, or it even sounds like Lathrop, or even this street over here, Evergreen, can the mass automobiles that would be moving on these streets, can they, are they actually built to sustain and to hold? And again, particularly with us with 696, because there's also a gas station that is soon to open right there at the corner of Coral Gables as well and Southfield Freeway. That is all.
Hello, my name is Gary Roberts, and my husband and I moved here in 2016. We're on California Drive Southeast. I've lived in many different states and a few different countries. And when we moved here, I have to say that I was horrified at the lack of access into our neighborhood for emergency vehicles. And having lived here since 2016, I can tell you that the south access, there's one single access, that's Lathrop Boulevard. And that is impossible during any type of rush hour and often during the weekend. I don't even try to go in and out of there anymore. I've already had one person run across and turn left in front of me and smash my car a couple of years ago trying to get out of the south end of Lathrop Boulevard. So that's just a death trap. I've seen traffic on Southfield Road so backed up that they block my road all the way down from Twelve Mile on rush hour times. Especially when there's other roads being worked on in the summertime, like when they worked on Greenfield last year. Southfield Road was crazy, then they worked on Telegraph, then Southfield Road became busy. And I think the other thing here that nobody has mentioned, and in your presentation, I believe it was about three out of four response calls are really for medical emergencies, are for ambulance. And an ambulance can come from any direction, if they're coming from Beaumont, if they're coming from Nine Mile Hospital down there, or some other ambulance service, they can come from any direction. And I personally don't wanna be laying on my kitchen floor dying, waiting for an ambulance to be able to either get into the south end of Lathrop Boulevard, or the north end, or through the traffic on Southfield Road, and not to be able to get to my house for five, ten minutes instead of three minutes. And I think this kind of access, we need to do, we need to figure it out. But to, a community that isolated as we have access, we have basically two points on north-south, no points on the east, and we have Southfield Road to deal with, which I know there's also upcoming, at least I've seen the plan, I don't know what the timing is, but there're gonna be major construction on Southfield Road, putting in medians, putting in Michigan left turns, all up and down Southfield Road between eleven and twelve, or between, yeah, eleven and Twelve Mile. So that's gonna be another point, there's not gonna be easy access for emergency vehicles. So I think we need to come to some plan to have some type of, at least, I don't know, one or two at the minimum, but some type of access from the east to get into this neighborhood, because we're cut off, and I don't wanna be dying on the floor of my home, 'cause I moved here to retire, and I'll be here till I drop dead, so, which some people might hope is sooner, 'cause I know I don't have a popular opinion here. But, you know, my neighbor was extremely ill, and she actually passed away from cancer a year ago. So, you know, there are medical emergencies, there are times that happen. And I think that we focused on hydrants here, which obviously the city has infrastructure problems, we had problems with the roads, we had problems with the water. Everything's been allowed to get, just, the city's getting very old and nothing's really been done for infrastructure.
Thank you, sir.
But I think-
Thank you, but, but your time is up, we're, we're on a three-minute limit.
But I think just emergency vehicles and ambulances is really seventy-five percent of the access problem, not hydrants and, and fire trucks at this-
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is William Daniels, and my house sits, I think that's a number one right there on Evergreen, and, and my house is right there. We built that house in ninety-nine, two thousand, because this was a quiet, nice place to live. Now, when we built that place, that road right there off of Evergreen was open for construction. And I told the builder that I wouldn't move here unless that was gonna be closed off. And we had to come before, and so the people liked it, it was open, they could come in. And we had to come before this council to get that promise kept, to close that road off. At that time, everyone in that cul-de-sac had kids, of course, they've all aged out now. But people going through there, they would hit thirty-five or forty miles an hour coming off of Evergreen, going up to Rainbow Circle, and, and then, and then go on around wherever they're going. It, it was horrible. And so we finally got it closed off, and, you know, it, I understand what you're seeing about, I don't know if you can do about access. I mean, the way our roads are, they're circular, they're off angled and all, in terms of an emergency vehicle. But in terms of fire, I just know that we don't really, we, we have a petition from everyone that lives in my cul-de-sac that should be here, if you haven't seen it already. Jamie Taylor has, has all our signatures about that remaining closed. And if you don't have it, I'll make sure you get it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a long-term Lathrop resident, and Lori Koons, and I just have a couple of questions. What I'm not understanding, I hear the people don't want it open, but you're saying we need to open it because our, the amount of calls you have to make to us have gone up, and, but you still have to use a fire hydrant in Southfield?
Um, as a back, yeah, as a backup. I mean, I mean, like I said, we tested the hydrants, we tested the hydrants. How's that better? Sorry about that. Yeah, so, when we tested the hydrants, they, they failed. We've, we've, we've had those issues, so we have to come up with a backup plan for that, and, and the medicals, and I, I get it, as the last gentleman said, I mean, you know, Lord forbid, you have a, you have a heart attack here, we're coming from up here, we have to come down here, go around here, come around here, come here, and get you. That's the risk I'm talking about, if, if that, if that risk is okay because of, you know, you don't want the traffic and so forth, or there's some medium, I mean, that's, that's a decision that you're, the residents are going to have to make. But I'm here to show you and tell you the risks, here, here are the call volumes, here are where they, here's where it's happening, it's pretty much all throughout the city, and, and here is, here's what we have to do. Yeah, if, if, if the hydrants, if the hydrant system fails, I have another backup, but if not, I have to go to a, I have to go to a south of hydrant.
Do you know exactly how many fire hydrants are not working, so when you go to the fire, if you, if you know you have to get another hydrant?
It's a, it's a, it's a closed system, right? So if you have a break somewhere in this, I mean, I'll still be sucking, I could be sucking the sentiments, you know, in it, and then that, that tries to get sucking into the truck, so you have dirt, all that. But then you also have, if it's, if it's leaking or going somewhere over here, then the water pressure over here is low, you know, over here. So it's a whole closed, closed system. The system is, this is one system. This is all one, one system. I mean, it's, it's, and so, and probably, you know, probably Scott can talk more about the water system if, if need, if, if need be, but that's the issue. That's why, but it's, it's about the medicals too. If you have a heart attack, you have a stroke, you know?
I, I get it, we, we had them closed for so long, but you're saying it's the number of calls that are increasing that make it hard to just get to us.
And they're going to keep increasing. I mean, as far as, we're, the baby boomers, we're living longer, we're living longer, better medicine, you know, the, the run, the runs are going to increase. I mean, like I said, my 55 to 85-year-olds, that's 80% of our calls, and then that's, that's what you see statistically, that's what you see across country, and the statistics show that we're living longer and that we're going to need more, more medical attention. Things, these things are happening.
But do you, did you say you know in advance which hydrants don't work, so you don't set them up and then waste time on that?
Well, if, if it's anywhere, any, so if there's a break one place, it's going to affect the whole system. It's not just where one hydrant, one, one hydrant is if a one hydrant isn't working, you know? I mean, if we go to the next hydrant, it's still a break in the system, we still could be sucking in dirt and elements, you know, in, into the trucks and, and not working. Once, once it, you know, once that breaks over there, the, the water pressure over here is, is lower. We have to go to a sustainable, reliable system.
But you really don't know until you hook it up if it has pressure or not, correct?
Well, that it's going to work, work properly, correct.
Okay, so there's time wasted there, so maybe if we could identify which hydrants don't work, that would help.
I, maybe I didn't explain it correctly, that you're not.
Like, I am not getting it. I, I know it's one whole system, so it's really infrastructure and fixing the water mains.
That's part of it, yes.
Below, that's what we really would solve our problem. Okay, I just don't understand.
Let me try, let me try.
No, I get it now, I'm, I'm just, want the water problem to be solved. Thank you.
Also get your telephone.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Chris Onishu, and I lived in Lathrop Village on Lathrop Boulevard for 35 years, and just a couple of observations. In the 35 years that I lived here, I've seen one fire in our area. Maybe you had fires on the other side, don't know about it. I guess the red things that we have on the street that says fire hydrants are just for show and tell, and that's the stuff that we got to fix, not the openings of the roads. Because I don't see the relationship between a fire hydrant and a heart attack. Because normally, I would get probably an ambulance from Beaumont Hospital that doesn't come from you. I mean, there's a lot of other avenues to get for heart attack support than having fire hydrants working. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think you're looking at it.
Can you correct me on that?
I think you're looking at it differently.
No, oh, no, I mean, just tell me how many, what's the increase of fires in Lathrop Village in the last five years?
Why, I just don't.
No, in the last five years, not last year. Give me a ramp.
It has increased.
Uh, what is?
You want the exact number? I don't have the exact number.
Just give me a, yeah, I'm a business analyst, you know, past performance is not indicative of future results, but I've seen one fire in 35 years on.
The east side?
The east side of Southfield. One fire, 35 years.
But doesn't one fire matter?
Oh, it was done in 30 minutes with all fire hydrants. It was two houses from my, from where I live.
I understand you're, I understand you're, if, if that's acceptable risk, that's acceptable risk, I hear you, but I gotta, I gotta, I gotta let you know what the risk is.
You're not telling me what the risk is.
I, I can, well, you're asking over the last five years, right? Okay, I mean, I can get those numbers for you, I can get those numbers.
Sure.
Well, I can get those for you.
So, excuse me, so what we're going to also do, because it's not just about the fire hydrants, I'm asking Scott Ringler to also come up here to be able to talk to you all about what's going on with hydrants and the, and the water meters and things like that, so we can bounce these questions off of both of them.
Testing. Thanks, Chief. Scott Ringler from Giffords Webster, I'm the city's consulting civil engineer. You guys can have a seat if you want, this will be a couple minutes. I just wanted to talk about the, the water main system in Lathrop Village. As the chief said, it's a closed system, and, and that's typical, because you don't want, you don't want connections to other municipalities for certain reasons, one's metering, two is bacteria and issues like that that could go from own municipality to another, so they're typically all closed-end systems. So, the city has, excuse my stats, about 30 miles of water main, in which about 18 miles of them are 1950 and older or so, and, and a lot of them are approaching almost 100 years old from the 1920s. These are cast iron water mains, they're six inch, eight inch, and 12 inch. The little issue you have with cast iron water mains is over time, the six inch water main, the water pulls out the iron, so now that six inch water main is three inch water main. And the fire hydrants go on, you see all that brown water, that's the cast iron coming out of that pipe. So you're, you're reducing a lot of fire, not necessarily pressure, but flow, so. The city has one meter, it's down here, this is where Sock was water main comes, and then from here, there's three pipes that go underneath 696 that feeds everything south of 11 Mile. And then the majority north of 11 Mile is fed up Southfield and down 11 Mile. So, you know, envision a fire up here, you got to get water from here through a network of old pipes to feed a fire hydrant. And by the time you get water up there, it, it's really reduced in flow, so, it's, the city has good static water pressure, it doesn't have good residual, and that means when you turn on a fire hydrant, that static pressure reduces to a residual. And that's what the fire department does, is they, they turn on fire hydrants, they look at static pressure, residual pressure, and then they come up with a, a fire flow for each of them, fire hydrants, so. In 2017, we did a, a water hydraulic study, and we came up with, with different areas of the city that are really low in fire flow protection, and them are the areas the city's been working on. So, so far, they've replaced, I'm going to screw up some of these roads, Wiltshire, San Rosa, they just did Golden Gate this year. 2017 and 18, 18, 19, we ran a brand-new water main all the way up Santa Barbara, across Roseland and tied into the water main on 12 Mile. So the goal there was to get a lot more flow up here and out into the residential streets. Going to chief's point, a lot of these fire hydrants are tucked back right next to guardrails, really difficult to get to, because, you know, they got to, I don't know if you back down them streets or pull forward, but they're very hard to get to. So, and them are all dead-end fire hydrants, so there's no other hydrant, and that's why the chief's saying, you know, he needs to know where backup is, just for reliability, so. As far as improvements, the city has about 200 fire hydrants, Bruce, you might have to correct me on my stats. The capital improvement bond is going to replace about 120 fire hydrants. So that isn't just taking old ones out and putting new ones in, but we did a gap study, some, some blocks are really long, and there's no fire hydrant in the middle of the block, so we're putting a brand-new one in there, you know, for fire reliability. Gate valves, I think the city has about 250, the city's replacing or refurbishing about 160 of them. Yeah. And then as far as water mains, the city's been doing about a half mile a year. You know, realize, water mains cost about $250 to $300 for every foot to be installed, it is not a cheap process. So, trying to make strides, like I said, last fall, the Southfield Police, or Fire Department assisted the city in doing fire flows. I'll be honest, I think we did too many in one day. We put a lot of pressure on that system. City had water main breaks a mile away from any fire hydrant that was open, and typically that's water hammer, so once you open up hydrants and close them, you get this water hammer effect that traverses through the entire city. So, when they did their fire flow testing, it was basically this side, and they actually had water main break over here. So, that water hammer really travels far, so. I think that's about it as far as the water system. I mean, I'd be happy to answer questions that you might have for the water system.
Sure. My name's Anthony Bennet, I live roughly where number four is. And my question is pretty simple, and I think there's some inconsistencies when you're talking about reliability and risk here. The people in the middle of the map there don't have any access to any tested systems. I've got one a block away from me. Isn't my risk lower than them? Because I, you can go 300 feet and hit a fire hydrant that you know works. Guy in the middle of that map, he's got no access.
Well, so I say, we did a gap study, typically you want fire hydrants 500 foot apart, because they carry hose, well, they carry a lot of hoses, but typically you want it 250 feet from a fire hydrant to your house.
But that's not simple. Isn't my risk lower than anybody else in this whole city?
Well, it could be, I mean, there's a lot of fire hydrants in houses and.
But I'm next to Southfield, I have access to a fire hydrant, so I open my street.
Well, if I can get to it, right? I mean, if I can get to it, you're saying you're up, you're up, you're by number four, if I can, if I can get to it, I mean, there's a block here, right? I can't get to that, necessarily get to that hydrant.
The guy in the middle of Lathrop can't get to any of them, ever.
Well, I understand, I mean, I got Southfield, I got Southfield Road 2 here, so I can use the hydrants here, but, like I said, I don't have access.
Sure you do, it's, it's, there's a sidewalk, there's a, there's a railing.
You haven't seen how much, how, how much staff and we can take.
But, okay, let me tell you, a guy in the middle of this map, what backup system does he have to get water? Zero.
Well, I got a tanker, right, that's.
Right, I've got a fire hydrant 150 feet away.
I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I've got less risk than anybody else in this place, don't I?
No.
Okay, I guess I don't, I'm not explaining.
We have to agree to disagree. I mean, I, I hear what you, I hear what you're saying.
All right, that's my only comment.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Michael Flore. I live over here on, over by Chris here. California Southeast in San Quentin. Everybody's here had made some really great comments. I might, what I want to add a little bit is on the traffic flow, we add more points of entry into Lathrop Village, you know, we, now we've got the Dutch boy's taking his finger out of the dike in the dam, and all the traffic's going to start flowing through people that want to get easier access into Southfield, easier access off, or even off or out of, onto and off of Southfield Road. We just did a three mil bond for quite a few years to replace all our roads, and now we're looking at putting a lot more traffic on them. And that's what I want us to consider here, is that we're not, it's just not residential traffic, but you've got a lot of commercial traffic, delivery trucks, there's a lot of big trucks, and they're the ones that pound the roads, right? And for consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Bayer, and I live on Lathrop Boulevard, I've lived there for 22 years. I've almost been wiped out a few times just trying to get my mail from people speeding down, not paying attention, blowing stop signs. I'd probably been wiped out a lot of times, but it's not my job to get the mail, that's my husband's job. And I don't think that there's a clear understanding of what's going on here. I think you're trying to fix a symptom and not a problem, and I think there's two different problems here. One is access for EMS reasons, and another one is something to do with poor water pressure in the system. I think we need to address each problem with what makes the most sense to make that happen. I understand if you're in the middle of there and somebody can't get in when you're having a heart attack, then let's address that situation. It's not a problem to get into me, and if there's hydrants there, but I've got to open up streets and increase my danger on the street that I live on to create more calls, because that was the answer, instead of fixing the hydrants, I'm not really sure I understand the thought process here.
Well, this isn't an easy fix, the water problem's an easy fix, right? I mean, this is, ain't going to be, well, hold on, I mean, you know, everyone's got their turn, how we're doing it, but it's not, it's not an easy fix, it's not, it's going to take time to.
But I think what's being proposed is the easy fix.
This is, no, this is a Band-Aid.
We don't want a Band-Aid.
Well, we don't want a Band-Aid. I get it, but this, this. Let's fix the problem.
Hello, Frank Solinsky, I'm on Lathrop Boulevard, just near the end of Catalpa. Have you made a similar presentation to the people of Southfield on the other side of the barrier?
No, I have not yet, no.
I've walked the barrier on several of those streets and talked to people that are on those dead-end streets on the Southfield side, and they were surprised that this was even a consideration. They like their little privacy just as much as we like ours on this side, so I didn't come across one single person who was, who approved of this, or has even thought this was a good idea on the Southfield side either.
Is there anyone else that wanted to be heard?
Hi, Karen Breen, Lathrop Village, Lathrop Boulevard. We all appreciate when police and fire can get to us when we need them. We need your help, we want it. However, I have been, living in Lathrop for 22 years, and it's the most compassionate community I've ever lived in, and I'm sure it wasn't your intention, chief, but you keep alluding to the fact that if we're willing to live with the risk of people dying and getting heart attacks, then that's on us. And I, I just think that that's inappropriate for you to say something like that, because we're talking about traffic flow from 12 Mile and Southfield into Lathrop Village, and ambulances have easy access there. So, it's not about emergency services or police being able to get to us, it's just about water flow. So please keep your references to us accepting the risk of people dying in Lathrop, to, please don't do that anymore, that's very offensive to me and I'm sure to a lot of people here. Thank you.
Well, I, I have. Well, I apologize. It was, it was not meant that way. I was, well, okay, let me, can I respond to that? I apologize. It was, it was, it was not meant that way about that. My, my whole intent today was to tell you about the risk of how, if you have a heart attack in this area, if you have a stroke of this, in this area, the, the possibilities of what could happen, the risks, the risk factors. Not saying, putting it back on you, but I'm saying, hey, this is, you know, I got a lot of calls about this, you know, beforehand and so forth. You know, so it was, I, I already knew what I was walking into. So maybe I'm being a little, I was being a little defensive and protecting myself. But my, my thing is to give you the information. And that was the, the whole intent today. I didn't come here to, to say, necessarily say, it's, it's, it's the residents. This is who I work for. This is, this is, this, these are the choices that we're, we're, we're public servants and so forth. My job was to give you the information. So I hope that didn't get lost in the message. So it wasn't about, you know, well, hey, if, if this how you feel, you want this risk, then that's fine. That's not how it was meant. So if it was, if it was taken that way, I do apologize. It was not, it was not meant that way. I've served this city for, you know, twenty-nine great years. I hope to serve it a lot more. So nothing I have more dear than, and that's what keeps me up at night is the citizens about hearing, about trying to protect them. So I do apologize if, if, if that came off wrong. It wasn't meant that way.
So we have some questions from people online, which they sent it to me. I'll just do it this way because they can't do the Zoom. So I have one question and it's coming from Patrick Simpson. It's a couple of them, so I'll, I'll pace myself with this one. How will the decision about street openings be made? Is this a city council decision or do the affected residents have a vote on this issue? I'm a resident right now, I'm just reading some...
You're, you're not the mayor now? You're not? You're not the mayor? How this, how this goes?
So it's gonna, I mean, I, I don't think this is something that we can make a decision with, like, today because it's not going to happen, it's not going to happen next week. This is something that I think we need to have more town halls about. I need, we have to have more discussions about. I don't believe it's going to go to the citizens for a vote, per se, but that's something that, I mean, it could, but it's not going to go this year. It's not going to go, you know, there's time limits of when you can put things on a ballot. So, and that's kind of kicking it down the road if we do it that way. So these are all the things that we're going to have to discuss and hopefully we can all discuss it collectively. That's my roundabout answer, I guess. Who is going to pay for the potential street openings? I live on a dirt road, Sunset Boulevard East, and the city does not do a very good job of maintaining it. I accepted that our streets would not be included in the bond project even though I was specifically advised it would be in, in the vote whipping prior to the ballot proposal, but find it unacceptable that our street might be open as a dirt road. What is the plan to interest, address increased traffic? B, as an analog to two A, more of a comment, I'm absolutely unwilling to pay one dollar towards opening my street even if we are forced to open them. When will the exact details come about this plan? I guess that's back on us again. Again, we're going to have to have more conversation from this. This is not going to be one-and-done situation. That's quite obvious. It's not going to be a one-and-done. I think that from, and I'm speaking completely out of turn for council, but I think the whole point was is when it was first approached to us, it was to bring it to you to give you the information. Part A, it's probably going to be a part B, C, D, E, F, G. So this is just first step. Got some more steps to do. And so I just wanted to make sure, we just wanted to make sure that the chief actually came and gave the information that he gave to us instead of us giving you third-party information.
Based on the number of people that showed up, and I'll say a pretty consistent feedback you got, why is it going to go past Part A? You, you heard, nobody wants this. Let's be done.
I can't say that, so let's, 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 how about this? I'm looking here and I'm saying it's about thirty people, thirty, forty people in here, right? There's over four thousand people that live in Lathrop. So this is a handful. Honestly, even though it looks good, there's a lot of people here, this is still a handful. I think the right thing to do in a democracy is that we make sure that we have these conversations and that we are all educated on why this is even on the table. So there's no decision that's going to be made tonight. There's no decision that's going to be made tonight nor at the next council meeting. So we will have probably another opportunity, maybe on a Saturday, so we can get a fair sampling of everyone that lives in the city because this might not be a good time. I got feedback where people want to be here and they couldn't be because of the timing. We have people that were supposed to be on Zoom and on Facebook Live and they aren't able to because it went down. So there's a whole, there's, there's more to it. And I, I personally would feel uncomfortable if we made a conversation or we made decisions to even have more, no more conversations with just the sampling that we have here now.
So keep in mind that there's, there's, there's a lot of analysis that still needs to be done. There are ways, potential ways of solving this issue without changing anything. For example, the chief talked about the siren-activated gate. So we can put a gate on, it's going to cost money and we would have to figure out where, how to pay for it.
Never did a mic, but I'll, I'll use it anyway. But, but keep in mind, I mean, there, there are potential solutions that can take place that don't change anything. The streets would still be blocked off. People wouldn't be able to drive from one end to the other. They would have fast access. So, so this is, this is all going to be a, a process where, where council is going to have to discuss this. We're going to have to talk about, you know, what those options are and then come back and say, hey, guys, what do you think about this? So this is, this is, as Kelly said, you know, this is just a way to get the information out. So you, it's kind of the first bout of information for you. There's a lot more analysis that has to take place. This isn't going to be done like that. So just wanted to...
But hold on, sir, sir, one second, okay? Would you give?
I was, you, you said siren-activated gate. Is that like a border-crossing gate? Is that the kind of...
We didn't even get to an opportunity to talk about the options that we have. So that's, that's another thing that we still have to talk about. Yes, we have a lot of issues or we are talking about opening streets. We have not even discussed any type of options of what we could do. So, I mean, again, stuff, yes.
Why don't we address the issue? Water system. Look at Band-Aids.
I've already talked about it.
What is it going to take to fix the system?
About forty million dollars.
That is the issue. I mean, we keep on talking round and round and round.
I think the city engineer has actually already addressed that. It's, it's a cost issue. It's about forty million dollars to completely redo the system.
What we're going to do...
Is that accurate, Scott?
Million dollars a mile.
Million a mile. Thirty miles, so thirty million dollars to redo your water system. Which the city is doing. The city is doing. But it doesn't have a magic pot of gold to pay for everything.
Step one, town hall. We're doing it. Step two, we're going to have another town hall to discuss it some more. Because again, everyone should have a say or to be heard. And this may be not the, the good time for everyone to be heard. Everyone has a opportunity to be heard in this, about this situation.
If I could just direct your comment about that this is really a good representation...
This isn't a good representation for the size of the city of Lathrop Village. I think if we, I actually am surprised and think it really is, even though most of you probably live on Lathrop Boulevard, are going to be the most heavily impacted. But if my good friend and neighbor Chris hadn't told me about this meeting tonight, I would not have known about it. So I didn't get the E-blast. I don't know. And I think if I was someone over in the middle where the EMS problem is and I heard this was a thing about opening the streets to Southfield, does that affect me? Not really. Just those poor people over on Lathrop Boulevard, the streets that cross it. So I think part of the why, the, you know, what we see here is of how it was communicated so far of what, what are we talking about here? What's the, what's the issue?
Was, so. I'm not, was that a question that you wanted me to answer? I wasn't really sure. I'm sorry.
And just about a representation. We shouldn't decide here.
So, okay, let's, let's stay on, let's stay on like point for a second. It was communicated because, believe me, if, and I... At our last meeting, there was numerous people at our last meeting that's not here right now. Can we do better with our communication? The answer across the board is about everything we can do better when it comes to communication. But we're here now, right? And so now, let's just say, at our next meeting, our next town hall, which will be in the next, I don't know, three to four weeks. So now we all know that in three to four, or in a month, we're going to have another town hall. Perhaps, my thoughts are, this is just me having ran it by the council, to have it on a Saturday. So then you have more people here. It's just one thing that I, and this is personal, I guess, is because I read something in our packet and we keep talking about the sampling of how many people show up and they're the ones that make the decision. I personally think you need to hear from more people and make, uh, uh, make decisions based off of a diversity of people that show up. A lot of people that I see here always show up when there's something that's going on. Give opportunity to other people to voice their opinion. We are going to have another town hall regarding opening the streets. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we could get to talk about if we open these streets, what's options that we have? If we, if, I never say we're opening the streets. If we open the streets, what's the options? You know, so.
Thank you. Take your time. I'm just curious about the overall timeframe.
Just curious about the overall timeframe. You say there's going to be a meeting in a couple, three weeks. Are we talking six months before decision? Are we talking a year? Are we talking two years? Do you have any idea? We're just going to go with the flow and figure out the analysis? Is that...
I think we're just going to have to figure out the analysis. I'm not sure. This was more informational. It wasn't something, and I'm asking, this is in form of a question. We, I'm not on a time limit, per se, to get these things done? Or to consider, I should say?
No, it was, it was, I was told they write to, give you the information and that, that's what it is. So that's the city with the timeline on, on how we want to move forward.
So.
I wanted to ask...
Just a moment. It only runs so fast.
Hi, I wanted to ask the gentleman there that has knowledge of about our water system. I imagine you're doing like triage to pick some ones that are the worst. But how soon would it be that the water system would be, you know? What's our overall timeline for doing the water system?
That's, that's actually a hard question because it depends on the dollar bill. At a million dollars a mile, it gets really expensive. We do have a five-year plan. Actually, it's a twenty-year plan, but five years is pretty kind of solid. And that's doing about a half-mile of, of water main every year. So I don't have a great answer, but we do, we do have specific projects we're looking to do. This coming summer, we're doing Glenwood from Santa Barbara to, I believe it's Sunset or Eldorado. We're also doing a little portion of Bloomfield. There's no water main there. We're putting a brand-new water main in, hoping to add some loops and some reliability. We're also looking either this year or next year to do San Diego. That would be from Rackham all the way over to Stanford Court. So, you know, them are, them are the next three projects that's going to happen over this summer and/or next summer. Again, once we, this spring, we're going to work with the Southfield Fire Department, try to do some more fire flows so that we can work on our model and see how, how much the new improvements have helped the city's water system. And then we'll be able to, you know, look at that and pick some more projects moving forward that's going to benefit the, the entire system.
You said your model, so I'm, I'm just even understanding. If I understood, when we tested the last time, we broke, we created five breaks? Or is it to try and find the weak spots in the system or where to, what to fix?
No, no, that's not what we're trying to find. No, when they did the fire flows in the fall, we had five water main breaks over a period of about two days.
So we caused the breaks or we detected the breaks?
Caused them.
Okay.
Is there...
Two quick questions. One of them was, did the fire chief finish his presentation? I wasn't clear. Okay. And then the second question is, the, the blockades are between Southfield and Lathrop Village. So who is ultimately responsible for those blockades and removing them if they're removed? I mean, is that just a city of Lathrop Village decision? Or do we go to the city of Southfield and work with them to decide to remove them?
Actually, I'd like to address this if I can. We have been meeting with the city of Southfield to be able, I'm, I'm Sue Montenegro, by the way. Sorry, I am the city administrator here, if you didn't know that. We have been meeting with the city of Southfield to discuss this. And one of the things, I believe, if I'm correct, because it benefits both sides, both Lathrop Village and Southfield, if those streets are open, it would not be just a cost that would be borne by the city. That discussion would need to have further discussion just as all of this is coming about. It's not something that is written in stone at any point in time. It's just trying to find a way to solve an issue that is before us as a community.
Would that be with the county of Oakland?
I'm not sure I understand.
Southfield Road for twenty-five years, I'm, Southfield Road for twenty-five years has been, we've had this somewhat discussion about the repair, the changeover. It was interesting to hear from the gentleman in regards to information that he might have heard somewhere. But how does that play into the long term? We've been talking about this for thirty years. Now we got water problems, which we know, but how much is that based upon the north-south from six ninety-six to Southfield to Birmingham and only having one fire station at Twelve and Evergreen? On, on the Google map, it doesn't even show the fire location there because that is a pretty small building. Is there a way to put one over? If I'm over on Southfield over by Greenfield, I, I'm really concerned right now because how the heck, who takes care of me? Is it Berkeley? No, it's us. I mean, we're, we're your... That's Station Three, right there at Twelve and Evergreen. That's their closest station to, to you. You're telling we can't put another station somewhere off of Greenfield or...
But, but I, I think we're getting off topic here a little bit, you know, from the discussion that we wanted to have tonight.
The topic is that we need to have more access. If I'm dying and I've got to wait for Twelve and Evergreen, now it might be someone off of eleven miles from location in Southfield. Because Southfield has the money. We know that. So let's play...
Southfield has the money right to us.
We know that, Mary, you know that.
Yeah. But I just want, I just want, I want to make sure that we stay, let's stay on, yeah, let's just stay on point for this one right now because that's a whole nother discussion. Now we're talking about raising new buildings and things like that. That went to, I mean, okay, so let's pause. Let's take all this in of what we learned tonight and then let's get back together, I would say, in a month? That sound good? I mean, I'm, I'm...
And, and when we get back together, what are we going to discuss, to talk about? We've talked about a lot here tonight. I can't tell you that I followed any of it except my own particular interest. And so when we get back together, are we going to do this again? Are we going to have some things that we want to talk about?
Exactly.
With some concrete options for us to discuss and to ruminate about?
I think there needs to be bullet points of what we're going to talk about and stay on point. One thing that I feel is though, everyone needs to have their voice heard. And I think that that's what we did, however you want to speak. I think the next one needs to be where, you know, what streets are we talking about? You know, having the actual, having data to, to pass out, have options of if this goes through, what does this look like? Maybe even pricing if we want to have, what does it seem? And the other thing that I foresee somebody getting in a car accident and destroying the street. But those, you know, we, yes, I think, and I hesitate to say this, which I know if she's behind me, she's going to roll her eyes, but I think that... she's gonna roll her eyes, but I think that our staff will put together a nice little, uh, power, not a PowerPoint, but a bullet, bulleted presentation that we can all talk about, so we stay on point. Does that sound fair?
What is a month?
In a month. On a Saturday.
I stay on, um, the corner of a villa and Lathrop Boulevard, uh, which is, uh, I would say, a very dangerous intersection. Pretty much is what it is. Um, I've had to replace my mailbox twice. Um, my neighbor across the street's dog got hit by a car. Um, and when those items were brought up, we were told that we suggested speed bumps. Uh, we went to meetings, uh, at the Panera, had a meeting about speed bumps. We were told we couldn't afford that. So now, you're saying to open these streets and to, uh, either put a gate or a speed bump, you know, proposing that, so that doesn't make any sense to me. Um, we have a very bad traffic issue on Lathrop Boulevard. It's just, it's terrible. And, um, you know, I was told, you know, more people are working from home, so it's more noticeable. You know, that's why we're getting increasing calls, because people are working from home, which has nothing to do with my mailbox being hit twice, my neighbor's dog got hit by a car, or any of that. So, I understand they want access to water on the Southfield side, but, um, you also have to understand, you're not, you don't live there. So you don't see, and you don't have to deal with dodging traffic. I mean, on Halloween, some of the kids were almost hit by a car because cars come speeding down Lathrop Boulevard. So I don't understand how that makes sense. And then also, I would like to know, how do you have a discussion about who's gonna pay for what if there was no decisions made?
It was just, it's discussions, as we were putting everything on the, just putting everything on the table.
Right, but it had, it wasn't even presented to us in order for it to move forward, to even have a discussion about who's gonna.
I actually think it's really proactive to figure out if there's an opportunity where, if we have to open streets, that it's an opportunity that Southfield would share in opening these streets.
I mean, I understand that, but.
I think that that was more of a proactive, uh, move, just to see what the options were. This was, again, just to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. Um, you all were heard very clearly that, you know, you don't want the streets open. But now, let's talk about, what does that look like if we don't? What does that look like if we do? We understand that there's a speeding problem. The street I live on, that goes straight from eleven mile to twelve mile?
Right.
That's 696. So I understand, um, about, uh, the, the speed issue. So we have various things that's going on, and we'll be here all night to talk about the various things that's gonna happen, when the main reason we're here tonight is just about, for emergency purposes, only of opening the streets and for you to know the information that the council heard from the fire department. That's the only reason. No decisions have been made. And we haven't even gotten into the whole traffic, uh, issue. So there is so many different layers that we're still gonna have to discuss.
Right, I understand that, but the question was, how do you have a discussion about something? So it wasn't presented to us that there was a discussion with Southfield on who's sharing cost. That was just something that she said, and what she just stated. So I think if there was a presentation to fully, to be fully transparent, it would seem that she would have mentioned that or said that, uh, in, you know, in, in, in the.
We apologized, we didn't say that upfront. I have discussions about updating my house, 'cause I'm going to sell it. My husband has no idea until now that these are the things that's going on in my mind. Some things that's kinda just slip your mind, that, you know, oh, I forgot to say. And I, I'm totally just, you know, maybe throwing.
But one last thing about the communication about this town hall. Um, you posted on the Facebook page, I believe it was yesterday?
It's been posted. I did, I personally put it on the Facebook page, because I just wanted to make sure that everyone was here, because I've gotten personal emails that, you know, about when we were gonna have this discussion. So I took it upon myself to put it, um, on the villagers. It was already on the City of Lathrop Villages.
But, okay. But, the, the, the last, the last thing, the last thing. On the communication, it didn't mention anything about the streets that they were, uh, considering. So there was on the town hall communication, she, there was nothing to indicate what streets that they were proposing to open.
That's why we were having the town hall, so we could kinda talk about what streets were, were there. Because one thing, if we put streets on there, I'm sure that would have been just. It would have, but again, this is what I'm saying. I promise to you, we are going to have another town hall to discuss this. There's so many different layers to this. I understand, um, I understand how residents feel. I mean, I'm a resident, so I get it. I get about the speed. I get about all of that. We get all of this. So it's just to allow us to hear you, and we're going to do it again, so you can be heard, and then we can have more data, because I know a lot of people, he left, um, wants actual data. We can have all this information. Yes, sir. You're welcome.
I'd like to say, uh, uh, as the water pressure system, you know, I don't know why anybody's not talking about Biden bucks, you know?
Actually, we, you're talking about the ARPA funds, and believe it or not, and this is why.
Well, there's a whole lot of money.
I don't wanna go down this road, 'cause I'm just gonna open up a whole nother discussion. But literally, we just sat down with our Congresswoman on Friday to talk about getting additional money from the federal government. Please, can we not go down this road right now?
Thirty million is a drop in the bucket.
I mean, I'm just telling you that we are trying to do options. We're trying to figure out ways to get money into Lathrop in the first step, coming from the federal government. We just had that meeting with, uh, Congresswoman to leave on Friday. So we're trying to overturn, under, whatever, I'm sorry, just get my coat back. Um, so, yes, we are looking into Biden bucks.
Also, I'd like to say to, uh, my neighbors on San Jose, San Quentin, Catalpa, Avila, Arrowhead, Redwood, and Roseland, uh, believe in eminent domain. We're talking into the wind about them not, uh, opening those roads.
Thank you. We're gonna stop it right here. Um, I think we, this is a good place to stop. This is a good place to stop?
Good question.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, council, for bringing this to us. We appreciate it. Thank you, chief, for coming. Uh, it's very helpful. Uh, I would find it interesting if we could get a little deeper dive in those statistics you had. Uh, maybe a triage on the emergency calls and the fire calls. Of the fire calls, how many of those calls did you pump water on? Is it, you know, I mean, I think there's people lived here a long, a lot longer than me. I mean, I can think of two houses where there's been fires in five years. Well, less than that, really, one. The House in the Woods was years ago. Those are the only two fires I'm aware of where the water was pumped. So, I mean, that can help us understand how much money we should spend per year. For instance, do we spend a million dollars a year when there's water pumped once every twenty years? Helps us understand the cost-benefit value. So if you could provide some triage numbers, that'd be great.
Thank you all for coming to the town hall. We are gonna move on with our agenda right now. So if you would like to be here for the, um, thank you, the special assessment, please stay, but I have a feeling everyone is now.
Um, and just one thing before you leave. If you have not, uh, done the test to determine what your pipes are made out of for your water meter, please see Bill in the back. We have a little packet for you that you can test at home. There's, uh, information, there's a link there, uh, that you can go to and upload your information. If you've already done it, thank you, but if you have not, please grab that piece of paper back there with Bill.
Thanks a lot.
Uh, I think the chief.
Okay, so we have everybody back. Hate to put a damper on it for everyone, but we're gonna continue on with our meeting. Please feel free to stay here. Suzie Stuck? All right, thank you. So, um, now we're gonna move into our action requests for consideration and approval. The first one is gonna be the set, uh, special assessment roll number 2022-01 for 2021, 2022 delinquent sidewalk, 2021, 2022 delinquent ditch and culvert, delinquent 2022 nuisance cuts. This was, uh, something that was tabled from our last meeting. Sue, do you wanna go ahead and introduce it?
Sure, I'll, I'll start it off, but I'll ask Pam if she'll come in and continue to talk about it, because, um, she is, uh, much more, uh, well-versed about this. Um, this is just simply, um, uh, our ability to be able to add this to the summer taxes. Um, anybody that is delinquent on this, uh, gives us that ability to add it to their tax for the summer going forward. The final list will come out in April. Um, we hope that, uh, originally, our plan was to have, uh, the date that people could pay on this until February 28th. Um, we'll probably have to extend that out just a smidge more, um, because it did have to come here tonight. Um, but that is, Pam, do you have a date in mind? Do you wanna stick with the, the February 28th? We have to get the mailings out right now. Um, maybe extend it a week?
Just to give you a little bit of brief for the council, for the members.
Lift it up a little more.
Yep. Just to give you a little bit of brief for the council members that didn't know about the process of the whole thing. Back in December, we send you out a list. That is the list that we're sending, so we have to send out the public hearing notices. In January, we send out the public hearing notices. That's when the residents have time to come and to dispute their bills or anything like that. Then after, you normally, after the January meeting, we send out the letters right away after that and ask for a February, um, 28th deadline for the payments to come in. Um, if people pay like a week later, we will still remove it from the list. Then in April, because it takes us time to look through the whole list, we have to look through everybody's accounts, we have to check each one. If they made a hundred-dollar payment, we have to remove that hundred dollars off their special assessment list. If they made fifty-dollar payment, we have to remove that. And people will make a hundred, fifty, a hundred, and we have to go down and to move, remove those off the list. So we've always asked for the February 28th date, because we're getting into the end of my tax collection season. March 1st is getting ready for settlement. Then after that, we go to April. At April, you get your final list. This is what is going to the tax roll. The thing that, um, I heard back before is I put them on the tax roll. The county does not put them on the tax roll. I put them on, from my office. I do the tax roll with the water bill and everything. Once that's done, the only go to the county if you are delinquent on paying your taxes. So if you didn't pay your taxes, let's say we're in 2022 right now. Anything I put on last summer on the tax bills, if you don't pay your taxes before February 28th, March 1st, they go to the county. After that date, I can't do anything with it. It's at the county level. You have to pay the county, because you're paying your taxes there. You also have to pay your special assessment there. So that is how the special assessments work. I do another, once you guys finalize the list in April, before I take them off the system and before I put them onto the taxes, I will run through that list one more time. If anybody has paid it off, I will write, I keep your full list that went in April, but I will write next to it "paid," so that it is paid off, or so that portion does not get to their taxes. But we do that, and so it's a process. I mean, right now, we've got a lot more, because we have the water, we have the sidewalks, we have the ditch and culverts. We have all that going on right now. So that is the whole process of the special assessments. So did that answer your question? It's a little more than you needed, but.
Answer mine.
It's a little more than what you needed, but that's how the special assessments work.
I appreciate that. Um, someone wanna make a suggestion, a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, make a motion to.
First, you gotta make a motion, take it off the table.
Oh, can you make a motion to take it off the table?
I'll make a motion to take the special assessment roll, uh, for 2022-01 for 2021 slash 2022, uh, off the table.
Need a second. It's been moved in second. I don't believe there has to be a discussion regarding that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the special assessment roll 2022-01 for 2021 slash 2022 for delinquent sidewalks, uh, for 2021 and 2022 delinquent ditch and culverts, and delinquent 2022 nuisance cuts.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any, uh, further discussion?
Yes. We had a lot of people that were at the last meeting complaining about all the issues, and we, that's the reason we tabled it. What has happened in that time to address any of the issues that this is back, back before us?
Well, I can, I can tell you, anybody that had payments and they have contacted me, we took care of it. The la, um, the one resident that was here that said that her bill was, she paid it in full. Actually, she did pay it, but she paid it in, um, these, or January of 2022. She paid off the estimate. She did not pay off her original bill. So what had happened with her bill is that the special assessment system wasn't even up and running yet. So it didn't get applied to it. They didn't, uh, whoever took the payment didn't get the payment to one of us, so we could put it in there. She called me the next day. I went into the cash receiving, saw what she paid, applied it to her thing, and she even got fifty dollars back, 'cause she overpaid, so. And you'll see that on the next disbursement report.
And there will be a report that comes out to council, um, as well, on those that did speak that evening, uh, with their concerns that they had, as well as follow-up that staff has had with them, uh, going forward. So we have been addressing those.
And the other thing is, you did ask if we would give them, I will give them another week. We will put in a letter that we will give them one more week to pay the special assessments.
And is there anything I questioned? Uh, original bills or statements, letters had names on them. The, uh, notice about the public hearing had a parcel ID number and resident. So, I mean, it kinda looked like junk mail, so I'm wondering how many people, you know, didn't even pay attention to it.
I did look that up, because I told you that I got it with my name on it. And when I, I looked at it, it comes with your parcel and your address, but when you open it up, it's directly, um.
No, my, mine had my name on the envelope, the first, with the first letter.
They might have did that.
The issue was that it was only a parcel that you had a concern with.
It was what?
The issue that you spoke about last week was the fact is that it only had the parcel.
Right, it did. It said parcel, parcel number and, and said resident, yeah.
But you have your, your name on it?
The first one, there was a letter that was sent out with the initial information that had a name and address, not, not a parcel ID, just name and address. And then the follow-up for the public hearing had a parcel number.
But that's just the way they did the labels that time. I don't know what system they, whoever did the labels. Uh, I did not do them personally.
You mean a staff person?
Some of the, one of the staff people. It depends on how they did it, and what system did they take it off? Did they take it off the water and sewer? If they took it off water and sewer, that only goes to residents.
Right.
If they took it off the sidewalks, then that goes to a person's name. So it's just the different systems that we have. And we can't do water bill, water and sewer bills into people's names, because of the.
The recession and all?
No, it's because of the, um.
The loans to the property.
The, the name and, because it's a postcard. It's not sealed in an envelope. It's a postcard, so we cannot put, we had to go through and change it all to resident or occupancy. So that was something we had to do back, I wanna say, probably six or seven years ago, so.
That's another good reason for a CRM that integrates all of the information. Is there, um, any other questions you have? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the sidewalk repair program contract Southwest. Look, this is not Southwest, SW 2023 extension. Who would like to introduce that?
Um, I'll introduce it. Um, this is brought back to you again this evening, um, uh, to extend the contract with, uh, KD Cement, uh, to continue the third. continue the third year. They have only asked for an increase of 2%, bringing their total up to 175, 271, 19. It's an increase of $3,436.69. Please keep in mind, as was shared with you at the last, at the last meeting, that concrete alone has gone up by 17%. I know and I hope that the intent is not that it would go back out for rebid because it would come in at much higher prices. But one thing I will say is that staff will be working additionally hard to make sure any issues are addressed that are brought to our attention. We will have that as part of our pre-con meeting with KD Cement on some of the issues to make sure that these things are addressed upfront. And again, the information that was brought or the concerns that were shared at the last meeting, they are being addressed as well with those people that express those concerns. We're working to meet that.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
Motion to approve the sidewalk repair program for the contract SW 2023 extension.
Hold that thought. There also needs to be a...
And I had it written down.
I knew you'd do that. Motion to take line item B off the table.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, again, motion to approve the sidewalk repair program contract SW 2023 extension.
Second.
It's moving...it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Anne, I'll start it. So it's two things I wanna say about that when I read this. I don't think that it matters how many people complain or are concerned about something that we need to listen to what the residents are saying. Again, it's so you can be heard. It's not necessarily that something's gonna be changed, but it's to be heard and to be acknowledged. And like even what you were saying about one of the residents who was on the list and she wasn't...she shouldn't have been on the list, it was corrected. So I'm just a little bit concerned in what I kept hearing today and the number of people complaining. It could be one person and everyone else can not...maybe can't show up to be able to voice their concern. The other thing is, and I'm saying this very, very gently, is that both Scott Ringler and Sue, going forward, I would hope and I would expect to be much more oversight on what's going on with the repairs. I think that would just, you know, just to be present and to given...I mean, I know you all give an update, but to be present more, I guess, because that's something that I heard from our last meeting. And then my last thing is, I know as a government entity that you're supposed to go with the lowest bidder. I'm never a fan of that. I never have been a fan of that. The best person, the best company should be the one that's considered. And when I suggested to table this, this is personally, not anyone else, it was simply to have KD Cement here, not necessarily to be braked over the coals, but sometimes you have to hear what your customers are saying so you'll have a better idea of how you're gonna operate going forward. That's the only reason why I wanted to table it, because I wanted them here to hear from their customers. I personally do not wanna go out to rebid because I already know, I have an idea of what that will look like. That's all.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add to that, Kelly, is just to take the lessons that we've learned from last year and move them forward, which, you know, we talked about at the last meeting. You know, once you go do a street, don't go back, you know, that kind of thing.
I guess, so I guess I do wanna ask, did you guys reach out to KD Cement after we had the meeting, just to see?
They were not available for tonight.
Well, in general, have you had discussions with them and letting them know what...
Anytime that we have had issues that have come forward, we have conversations with KD. I know that both Scott and Suzy have been in conversation with them throughout the whole project. The thing that I'm hearing from council is, you know, as was stated earlier tonight, the need for communication to continue. There's always room for improvement. And that is something that will truly be discussed in depth at the pre-con meeting with them. But overall, looking at the project itself, we...I'm not trying to discount those that did have concerns. If I were a citizen and that happened to me, I would want to be heard as well and know that I was heard, so I do agree with that very much. But there were a lot of people that were very satisfied with the work as well. We will continue to have conversation with them and make sure that we stay on task and make sure that we come back and bring reports to council frequently as well.
Well, okay, thank you. I guess, second, do you...Scott, Suzy, do you guys have a plan on how to stay in contact with them? The punch list, you know, do you guys have a plan initiated? Have you guys discussed that? Are you planning on discussing that? Do I sound crazy? I don't know.
Don't sound crazy. But I mean, I'm in contact with KD probably daily. I talk to them during construction. The punch list, whenever I get it, is updated daily. I mean, it's updated. I go and check on these things personally. I cross them off personally.
And just to add to that, I mean, Scott and I are pretty much best friends for the entire construction season. So I am regularly talking with Scott when I have, when I get emails, phone calls, you know, residents coming in, talking to them. I am almost instantaneously talking to Scott as well and saying, hey, have you spoken to this resident? You know, we need to connect on, you know, this and that. And, you know, I'll circle back with...circle with Scott, circle back to the resident and respond in that way so that we are...I'm giving complete answers that I've, you know, made sure to communicate with Scott Ringler. I mean, we get regular communication from the front office staff as well. So we are in very regular contact with each other about these, these issues and complaints and concerns that we get from residents.
So while I can appreciate that you all stay in constant contact, but there is a disconnect between residents, you two, KD, and the residents. So there's something that's missing between there. I mean, and I don't know what that is, and that goes back. I know we have a communication issue and yes, we...I know we have to get a CRM or some type of program where we can keep track of all this, but in the meantime, we have to figure out a way to stay on top of all of the complaints we have because obviously some have slipped through the cracks.
Sure. I mean, it happens. We do our best to resolve them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Well, if I could add, especially to Jill, and my goal as a consultant is always to return calls within 24 hours. Doesn't always happen. There's days I'm not around, but I do really try to touch base with...
You gotta get the complaints. That's why I'm saying there might be a disconnect between them.
Well, once I get them, it's usually a quick phone call.
I get that.
Now, to ask a contractor to stop all his production work, to go back in the north part of the city to do a little landscaping is a little difficult. We want him moving on sidewalks. That's why most of this is landscaping issues. They get put on a punch list, they get taken care of. A lot of times, it's towards the end of the contract, which KD was 12 weeks. So yeah, I get it, it's a long time to wait, but we do try to stay on top of them, make sure that they're documented. I think I got about eight of them still open that he's gotta go back and do. Most of them are irrigation. These guys, you know, they start ripping concrete, they're ripping six inches each side of that sidewalk. They don't see them sprinkler heads. They get pulled, you know, then it's hard to put them back and figure out how it works because all that piping's underground.
I mean, it keeps going back to the number one thing is communication. And, you know, that's something that we all need to work on.
Yeah, as far as oversight, Mayor, you know, I kinda looked. I had my inspector out there about eight hours a week. Oversight's expensive on these projects. So, you know, one, I'm trying to keep our bill down for the city and the residents. You know, if you want more oversight, I can do that, and I'll work with city staff to look at that budget.
And then again, it's gonna be a communication. We gotta figure this out because it's where...it's not just the...you can't oversee something you don't know is wrong if you're not getting that information. So, I mean, it...to me, it's a deeper issue than just oversight. I think there is, you know, the telephone game, somebody's dropping a ball somewhere down the line, so...
Do you have any suggestions?
A communications plan.
At the...
No, and that shouldn't be mean like that, but no, we as a group really need to work on a communications plan. Do you have some ideas that I would, you know, I'm just gonna bring up it later? Because until we can get to a CRM or get into some type of software that we can record all of this, we gotta do something to stop this hemorrhaging.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at least, like, once you know that there's an issue, like, someone needs to reach out to the resident and let them know at least that you know that there's an issue. And like, I think that's really what the residents want, is just some...just to be addressed, affirmed, and things of that nature. So I think if you guys could really work on that piece, it would really help ease the residents' minds about this whole sidewalk plan. And so I think, yes, we all as a whole need to work on it, but I guess we're counting on you guys to make sure that this does not happen next time because we're about to...we're talking about approving them. And although I know that cement is almost double than what it really should cost right now, we need to make sure we have a plan in action to make sure our residents are taken care of. Like, this is just...we're concerned if...we're just hoping you guys can see our concern that we're like discussing approving this contract and we have all of these residents complaining. But also, we know that the cement is expensive, so we just wanna make sure we have a plan in place, if that makes sense. And I'm willing, of course, you know, I'm willing to help you find solutions always. I may not have one right now, but I will...I will work with you to get that. I just want you guys to know our sentiments, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Jennings.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, the last meeting, I asked, Giffords Webster gets 15 to 17% off of the projects. I don't know what that covers. I asked for a list of the management responsibilities of Giffords Webster to see what kind of things are...they're supposed to be taking care of, what things are the responsibility of city staff, what does that look like? And then I also asked for a report from Giffords Webster with follow-up plans for addressing the issues that we've had over the last two years. What plan is in place to make sure that those same things don't happen going into the third year? I didn't get that and wanted that before we were voting on this again, but...
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So now we'll go to public comment. I'm open at this point. What do you wanna talk about? And I have to excuse myself.
Yeah.
She has to go to the bathroom, so...
Okay.
The restroom, excuse my language.
I think you're gonna hear about that.
With your permission, I'll wait for her to come back.
Oh, okay. Why'd you ask somebody else to come?
Yeah, we'll let somebody else go if you wanna wait.
Oh, that's right.
Jason Hammond, and I'm here to beat the dead horse about the communication plan. So it's come up several times tonight, even just a minute ago. It would be great to see any sort of action on it, even an appeal to residents of, hey, if you wanna participate in solving the problem of establishing a communication plan, let us know. Even a proposal to establish some sort of a resident-involved and staff and council-involved committee to start the discussions and documenting what should go into a communication plan. Anything, just to get the ball rolling, because all I've heard up to this point in over a year now since this council was impaneled is communication needs to improve, but no action to actually improve it. So that...I know it's come up a bunch of times tonight, and I'm just here to reiterate that it needs to happen. And it needs to be documented, and people need to be able to rely on it and trust in it. That if there's something in there that says, if you have a complaint and it goes to this department and you're gonna get a response within 24 to 48 hours, days, weeks, months, whatever, that you can rely on that's actually a deadline that people can trust. So I personally am happy to participate in something like that if there was going to be some sort of a committee formed to start the work on that. But it's gotta start with council and directing the staff to get the ball rolling. Thanks.
Thanks, Jason.
I have just a quick question. Thank you. I couldn't make last month's meeting, but I have problems with my grass from the gas company, and I don't know to whom to go and say I need help.
You can go to...leave your, leave your name and address.
Oh, to you?
Sue Montenegro after the meeting, please.
Beautiful. Okay, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. I will be seeing you.
Wonderful.
You're welcome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Willie Gibbons? Look, I just heard tonight about the special assessments for delinquent sidewalk. I just wanted some clarity on that from a standpoint of, I was...it was strange that people would be caught in a delinquent situation there because you do have a program where you can pay 50 for one year or $100 for two years to pay it fully, correct? And those people are not on this delinquent list to be put on the tax. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'm Nina Downing. I'm the president of Lathrop Village Women's Club. I strongly believe in being true to others when I give my promise and I keep it. I also believe I have the right to expect this of others. The Lathrop Village Women's Club prepared our schedule for the dates 2022 to 2023 for the year and submitted it to the scheduling clerk, who accepted it and approved all the dates and locations. We meet at the village hall seven times a year, seven days. One time, we go out for the picnic in the shelter. Typically, we use the community room twice, and we use the meeting room upstairs five times, five days a year. This was all approved when we submitted the application. That being said, last week, we were informed that using the second-floor meeting room was no longer to be used for our meetings, and we were told we had to use the basement lobby. You broke your word to us, and we deserve the right to have you honor the original agreement. Here is a little background of the Lathrop Village Women's Club. In 1972, Lathrop Village was still a town site. There was no building, there was no property. The council met at the church. In 1973, Lathrop Village Incorporated and became a city. The city council, the mayor, and all the authorities in town came to the Lathrop Village Women's Club and said, please help us. We need money to buy the land. We wanna build a building and be a real city. At that time, the Lathrop Village Women's Club was a big organization. They had a big pocketbook. We gave the city $280,000. That's $1,878,000 in today's money. That's one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in today's money. Hang on a second. We have, we were founded eighty-four years ago and have dedicated ourselves to serve the community with our time, our talent, and our resources. It is a very sad state indeed for the administration to have so little regard and respect for us that we have to sit in the lobby five days a year. We deserve the right to have you honor the original agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Good evening, I'm Loretta Deloche, forty-year resident of the city. And I just have a couple, I would have some more things, but it's short, and it's time for my wine. Have to have it before ten. I wanna, I wanna know if, in fact, we are going to have a parks and recreation person that we need desperately. So that's.
So, I, we, everyone have an opportunity to address what you're gonna ask, ask your questions, and then we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, okay. So I wanna like to know if we're gonna have a park and recreation person, and that person would also be doing programming for seniors, which we need. Lathrop falls pretty short on our seniors. We've done a few things lately, so I can't really crack the whip, because some things have gone on that are pretty nice. But basically, we don't have a senior things like other Oak Park and South Hill and everything. I know they're bigger and stuff, but we still have had a programming for seniors just to go, like, exercise, lunch and learn, field trips, and play bridge or something like that. Those are two things. And the other thing is, I don't understand that we have a, Nina mentioned, a meeting room that we cannot hold meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak? So, um, this is from me personally, not the council. Sometimes you hear, I hear ideas, or I hear what is, what someone thinks is best, and I don't know the big picture of how it affects other people, which that falls short on me to not know how it affects everyone. So I have two questions for you. One is, for the women's club, I agree, I wouldn't wanna meet in the basement, just being honest, of how long your meetings are, how many people are a part of it, because there are other rooms, there's other options, you know? Number two, if the meeting, and this is, you know, sorry, just gotta say what I gotta say. If the meetings are, like, one hour to two hours, the people that are disturbed could possibly relocate at that time to allow this. So I apologize, I did not know the effect of how this came out towards the women's club, because I think that you all are a strong, strong organization that still does a lot for the city, and I would not wanna see that you're slighted. And so hopefully, what we can do maybe after this meeting, or we can meet sometime next week, to figure out some other options, if not going back the way that it was, and we can, we as staff and administration can accommodate. And that's my promise to you all, that I, you know, I will work to try to figure out what we can do for that. You know you're not allowed to come back, right? I'm just kidding.
Thank you. I just wanna say, normally, our meetings are very quiet. We just meet a regular meeting.
You're in it, it's not quiet.
Only one time, we had, two months ago, three months ago, we had Family Feud. And it might have been a little disruptive, the family food night. But if we were disturbing anybody, nobody ever came out and said, can you keep it down? And that's the only time that anybody would ever said anything to us. And we find it, we leave it like we find it, so it's not a lot of cleaning up or anything.
Well, let's, let's figure something out.
And then after we were, then we, we were supposed to be in another place, in the community room, at a hundred dollars an hour. Duh.
Let's.
Plus cleaning fee.
Let's, let's figure something out. That is my promise.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out. Any other coun, any, this code is killing me, any other comments, public comments? Okay, we're gonna go into ma, mayor and council comments. Okay. Um, oh, no, we were here to midnight. That's late. Senior programming, absolutely, that that's what we need to do. And I really have to give kudos to my co-council that's really focused on bringing not only seniors together, but the community together, trying to make sure we're maintaining some type of programming. So I wanna thank Barb, who's really been, you know, digging in, trying to figure out something to do every month. And then with Jalen and, and.
And yourself.
And this guy.
Five years, and she doesn't know my name.
I try to forget it. But the fact is that we're all, I'm trying, did I say it out loud? Oh, my God, it is getting, I have cold medicine that's going on. I swear it off. So we are trying to put programming together. And right now, when it comes to parks and recs, we're talking about combining the position, we're still talking about it. We need a parks and rec person. But right now, we're all digging in. I think that's where, and Barb, please, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn for you, but I think that's where Barb is really kinda stepping up and trying to bridge that gap until we get somebody.
Yes, we're trying for once-a-month activities, Friday nights, six to eight. There'll be something different every month. We are gonna stick with bingo, that was pretty popular. We'll add a little bit to it. We wanna try to collect donations, I think that was brought up at the last bingo. We'd like to do a renovation in this room, so we'd like to sort of incorporate that into the activities as well. And then there's senior activities. I think, I feel like we're doing one a month. Does that sound about right?
And so there is, I mean, there's other opportunities that's coming up, because, and I'll explain it to you all, there is a way that we can do more activities that I've been talking to Sue about that is gonna be, like, a little unconventional in a way, but just to make sure that we're still doing stuff here. And that's what, that's something that I can do, and we'll talk about it. For senior programming, parks and rec, I answered your two questions. Right, okay, good. So what I also is gonna bring up is that, and I did ask on the posters, this is just for FYI, twenty twenty-three Optimus Club oratorical contest is coming up. Hopefully, that will be posted on the website, and also in our e-newsletter, is for us scholarship from the Optimus Club. And it's due sometime in March, and I failed to write down the actual dates. I'm gonna yield back, because I know there's something else that I'm missing that I was supposed to say, and I forgot right now.
Do we have a deadline for the spring newsletter?
I don't have anything out yet, but I'm thinking I need the information by March.
March first?
Tenth.
Tenth.
And that's a hard deadline.
And how, how do people make submissions? And recommendations?
For the new e-newsletter or for the one, the Our Town?
Oh, I'm sorry, either, either.
So I think we need, did we ever come up with a way, we need to have procedures of how people, I would like to see in writing, procedures of how someone can submit to e, the e-newsletter, the due dates, things like that. The Our Town, I thought, we're, that's gonna be strictly, you pay for that space, right?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that's what we did.
So we talked about it, but I don't recall us having anything written down.
There's a policy in place, it's on the website.
So what I'm talking about is that when we talked about it, there was no, we did not write out exactly what the procedures are gonna be for the e-newsletter and how people were gonna submit their articles or their suggestions. So I think that's something that perhaps at our next study session, that we need to write something out on the submission and how we'll do the e-newsletters.
Yeah, we talked about specific things, but we didn't.
It wasn't written.
Into a procedural kind of document.
Exactly. You have any, anything else? Anyone else?
Yes. At the last meeting, I brought up the fact that we are paying for a parks and recreation person and a communication person, forty-four thousand dollars, and so I'm wondering, I presented it at the meeting, I emailed copies of all of it to the mayor and to the city administrator. I'm wondering why the person who was hired for that position is not doing the things that they were hired for. Our Town, e-newsletter, parks and recreation programs.
Who is the person that was hired for that?
Brittany.
Brittany was hired for DDA, not for parks.
I'm sorry, the position is DDA and Special Projects Manager, and that was. Yes, I sent you all of the information, the job posting.
You can send information, it can still be incorrect.
Oh, wow, okay.
But go ahead.
Brittany is the DDA's manager and Sp, DDA and Special Projects Manager. Special Projects was something that was added to that position once Chris Clough left. And that was because the Parks and Rec position needed to be reorganized, and in the interim, as a stopgap measure, those duties were added to Cory Doll's position.
It was not a stopgap measure.
Yes, it was, ma'am.
It was a raise of twelve thousand dollars.
Councilwoman Miller.
Up to forty-two thousand dollars.
It is up to the DDA Board of Directors to determine how to allocate the funds that are avail, that are used for DDA staff. We're paying eight thousand dollars of that salary. You are paying ten percent of Brittany's salary. No, we are paying more than that. I will send you, I will send you the job description. I, I have her job description, Councilwoman Miller. I wrote it. I know exactly what it says.
So the one thing that we're just, the fact is that Brittany is paid from the DDA. Her job is from the DDA. She's not, it's not for the Parks and Rec.
She's paid about twenty-six percent by, from the general fund. She's paid about twenty-six percent from the general fund.
The fact is, is that what you are speaking about is incorrect.
It is not incorrect. I sent you all of the documentation from city council.
You can send as much information as you would like, but if the information that you send is incorrect, it's incorrect. She works for the DDA, she's a special projects person, the manager for the DDA. She's not a Parks and Rec coordinator. We do need to hire a Parks and Rec coordinator.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming up and explaining.
Well, the job is top.
Do you have anything else, Councilwoman?
Yes, I documented everything.
We're not gonna resolve it today, because that's, it's not gonna be resolved tonight.
Well, you should have responded to me, that was a couple of weeks.
Your emails come across where you don't ask the question, we don't know what your emails are even about, because you don't ask the question.
I sent you the information.
You just send statements. I don't know, most people say, hey, can you help me with this? Can, what is your, what is?
I presented it at the last meeting.
You know, you yell at us about it, so, but that's a whole different story, just please, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to be a good steward of our taxpayer dollars. We're paying a person forty-four thousand dollars, plus a lot of benefits, no, not from the DDA.
It's from the.
Twenty-six percent comes from the general fund. I sent you all of the information, if you would look at it. It was things that were put into place to cover communication and parks and recreation. It's written, all of it is written in the job description, and the same job description that was given to Cory. It was not a stopgap measure.
If I can interject into this just a bit, you know, when, when I come to you with a need for something, it's because it's not getting filled in the manner in which we have tried to fill it. No, let me finish, please. What may have been a job description that was put together, as we go forward, we find out that does not allow time to meet the needs of issues that have been raised tonight by citizens we have here to be able to have the programming. It was something that was added when Chris left to try to fill that gap, to make sure that it didn't just fall through the cracks. And we're finding that we still don't have adequate staff to be able to meet those needs. That's what we're hearing from our citizens out here. We miss these programs. We miss the things that used to happen, because we had a full-time Parks and Rec person. You can't take a full-time job and condense it down into twenty hours a week and make sure that you're hitting all of the spots. We just don't have that ability to be able to do that right now. Brittany has been trying to make sure that the e-newsletter gets out every week. She helps with programming whenever we need something, special flyers that are put together, whatever it is that she can do, but that is not the main focus of the job that she's been hired through the DDA to do. And while the general fund does support some of her salary, it does not support it to the extent that we need to have that done. Nor does it allow for the time that we need to have somebody dedicated to that position. That's why I came to you as city administrator to ask you to consider combining these positions into a single position for somebody to do Parks and Rec and our communications plan. That was our communications specialist. That's why I came to you with that need, to discuss that with you.
I would like to see an updated job description then, because taking away those specific things doesn't leave much.
It is, it is my intent to update, I've been talking with staff about this as well, to update all of our job descriptions, so that they are more reflective of what we currently do. However, I'm one person. It is something that you tell me what to prioritize, and I will focus on that. There's only so much time I have to be able to devote to staff as well. Staff as well only has so much time, you know, it is something that we do need to do, I'm not discounting that. But it's not something that you can say to me, I want this done, and next week I have it out to you. Otherwise, the budget has to wait. Otherwise, infrastructure has to wait. Otherwise, something else has to wait. We are getting to these things as we can. We have been trying to bring on staff at the pace that we can handle doing that. And, and we're working to try to fill those gaps that are addressed. But just because a job description is created, doesn't mean that that is that job in perpetuity. If you go back and look at what the job description was for the Parks and Rec person, we never had a communications person as part of that. These things have been, we've been trying to fill those in as we see the need, but we realize that need is not being met. It's been identified, but it's not being completely met.
We have twelve people working here. I think that's more than we've ever had, so not really sure.
I would encourage you to come and spend a day with us. When we are heavily into the things that we do every single day, and the questions and concerns that come our way, there's been stuff that I am supposed to be addressing in my job, but I've had other things that have come across my plate that I am not able to do that.
Please, let me say one thing. Chris had an advisory council, nine people, volunteers, and would do anything for him or anybody else. When he left, we, three people left, but I still left six people who were anxious and saying, you know, we wanna do this, we wanna do this, but nobody came to us to, so, so he had nine other people working with him, so.
We appreciate it.
And so we, I have people who wanna do things. And so if, if they could get an advisory council, and you say, if you get six other people working on the programming, it's, it's, it's not an easy, but it's, it'd be a lot better for everybody.
It's not an easy lift. We understand. Thank you.
But that's a big help.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I'm wondering, I wanna apologize to residents, this was advertised, this meeting was advertised as being on Zoom, so I'm wondering what happened to that.
As was stated at the very beginning of the meeting before you got here, is that the Zoom was down, and that we had issues, technical issues with both Zoom and with the Facebook link, and that unfortunately, we could not broadcast that way, so this will be posted. I also have reached out to the people that were reaching out to me to send me and Sue, or their councilperson, any questions that they have, so it was a technical issue.
Okay, also, we've talked about having a meeting to talk about what our plan is going to be. We've asked this multiple times, how are we gonna be transparent and have, give access to residents? What does that look like? I know Jim said that he had some ideas about doing things, and that has never been brought to us.
So that was something else that I do wanna talk about, that now just remembered, that we do need to have some type of goal-setting session, and that should probably include you, Jim, in there. And so it's all about just having a meeting, getting us all together, and I actually did discuss this with Mayor Pro Tim to make sure that we have an outline of exactly what the goals and action items are for our city administrator, what it looks like for each department, what the expectations are, thirty, sixty, ninety days, six months. But it is all about us getting together and actually having a meeting, which we did try to start that off at one of the. together and actually having a meeting, which we did try to start that off at one of the the study sessions, that didn't work, so it's all about just getting together and have a special meeting to do it. Anything else?
About a year and a half. Thank you for sharing, anything else?
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a quick comment, but I guess since it's being recorded, it's not that helpful, but, so my office hours will be on February, Monday, February thirteenth, from six to eight-thirty PM upstairs in the conference room, and it will be posted on Face, I think it's already been posted. So yeah, that's all I have to say, yeah, that's it.
All right, I have a few things. One thing, I, I just wanted to update council on the discussion, I think at the last meeting, when I was talking about infrastructure, because it turns out that I, I really undersold something. So we, we talked a little bit about the, the repair at the pit in Southfield, at, at the old, at the academy, so the two-inch pipe that had broke there, and I really didn't play that up, the repair of that up big enough, because one of the things that I didn't understand until our infrastructure meeting last week, was where that pipe broke in the pit, there was actually a drain at the bottom of the pit, so as that water is coming in, it's going out. So my hesitancy to embrace that as, as a major problem, was because if we were, we're losing, when we were at forty percent loss, we were losing about two-hundred thousand gallons of water a day, if you conservatively say, okay, let's look at half of that, that's a hundred thousand gallons a day, why aren't we seeing the water on the field? And the reason why we weren't seeing the water on the field was because there was a drain at the bottom, so that was a key piece that, that I, I hadn't, hadn't heard at that point. And so the one thing, you know, we, we did, that, that fix was made at the end of June, and starting in July is when our, when our water loss started to, to decrease pretty dramatically, so just trying to update you and say that I think that was a much bigger effect than I originally kind of led on at the last meeting, so I wanted to correct that. There was a lot of talk at the, at the town hall earlier about, about infrastructure, why can't we just fix the infrastructure? We're working on fixing the infrastructure, you know, the, the water system is something that, you know, we, we are spending, I think fifty, roughly about fifty-five percent of the, of the bond that we took out, to up the speed of fixing the water system, you know, we, as Scott indicated earlier, I think a hun, what did we say, a hundred and sixty, no, a hundred and twenty fire hydrants, a hundred and sixty-two gate valves, we did five, five water main projects, and again, you know, there was one gentleman who kept saying, well, let's fix the problem, that's what we're trying to do, but the problem doesn't get fixed overnight, it doesn't get fixed in one year, it doesn't get fixed in two years, it doesn't get fixed in five years, because we've got seventeen miles of water main that was put in prior, or that was put in in the nineteen twenties, and then another two miles in the next, I think, ten years or so, or ten, ten, fifteen years, so we've got nineteen miles of, of water main, so that, that's a big project, and it's very expensive, and we've got to find the money to do that. Also, along those same lines, one of the things that we talked about at our infrastructure meeting is, and, and I'll, I'll present more of this to council, but the study group is, is working on a recommendation to move two crucial water main projects up from twenty-twenty-four and beyond into the twenty-twenty-three summer construction season, and, and putting some of the underage dollars, so we're, we're under budget, you know, typically, the, the, the bond money needs to be spent in three years, we have an excess of, of bond money left over for a variety of reasons, which we'll, we'll talk about when, when we make that presentation, but the, the two water mains that we're talking about was San Diego from Rackham all the way to Stanford Court, so that, that'll address the north-south, we did a major project in seventeen-eighteen for Santa Barbara, wait, that's, that was north-south, east-west, so San Diego, that would be east-west, and then the other area, and I don't think you mentioned this, Scott, I tried to get your attention, but, but, but the other area that we're talking about, about fifteen years ago, there was a break in the Lincoln Water Main directly under Southfield Road, so at the time, the gate valves were turned off, rather than fixing that, that water main, so that, that, that prevents the flow from the east to the west, it eliminates redundancy, reduces pressure, and, and so forth, so one of the things that's great about being fifteen years down the road, is there's, there's more advanced technology, and fifteen years ago, that would have required us to rip up Southfield Road, there would have been all sorts of headaches and things that we would have had to done, and expenses we would have had to incur, but now you have the cure-in-place piping process, and so that, that's one of the projects that we're talking about moving from twenty-twenty-four and beyond to twenty-twenty-three, to, to do a cure-in, cure, a CIPP fix, to fix that underground section, and that should, should, should help the, the east, the south side of six-ninety-six, that, that southwest quadrant, so that's, that's something that we're looking at there. What else did I have?
I just want to say, I'm just gonna interrupt you real quick.
Sure.
Thank you for addressing the water main issue, but I, and I do think that needs to be one of the bullet points on our next town hall, because I think people think it's a, a simple solution, and I think it needs to be really broken down, just as the chief broke it down of what he wants to do, I think it needs to be broken down, just so people can understand that, I mean, yes, it's the, the main solution that needs to happen, but, I mean, it's gonna basically cost you, not, you know
Right, we're talking at least, I mean, in today's dollars, at least thirty million, you know, to do, do that, and then, you know, and, and you think about all the disruption we had, you know, this, this year, I mean, think about how much disruption you're gonna have if you do all that water main, you know, and say a five-year project, if you, if we even had the money to do it, so, yeah, so it's a good point, and I think Scott has a lot of statistics, I have a lot of statistics that we can include on there.
I have a question about that, we spent a lot of money on replacing fire hydrants and gate valves, is there any benefit to that, if the water mains, if there's not enough water pressure?
I guess I'll answer that one, yes and no, you're not gonna get much more pressure or flow through that hydrant, but Southfield Police Department's gonna know that hydrant works.
Well, it works, but, but it does, might not work?
No, it'll work, you're, you just might not get as much flow through there, but, you know, currently, sometimes they go to, you know, they, they, every winter, they, or fall, they go through and winterize all your fire hydrants. Susan and I just got a list of like twenty of them that were leaking, them twenty went to DPW, and they're addressing them, so, yeah, the brand-new fire hydrant, so it'll at least work, but, you know, putting it on a six-inch old water main's not gonna get you any more flow through there.
Yeah, and from, from the gate valve, gate valve perspective, that doesn't include the, improve the pressure, but what that does do is it allows us to sectionalize the, the water mains, so, so the, the great example, I think it was last, a year ago last spring, we had a water main break, and first off, to, to repair those water mains while they're under pressure, costs a lot more, it's a lot riskier, it takes a lot more time, more, more water is lost, and, and we had a, a water main breaks where they went to the next gate valve, and a lot of these gate valves, you know, they've got debris on them, they have to be dug out, it takes time, they turn that gate valve off, didn't work, went to the next one, found it, dug it out, lather, rinse, repeat, took fifteen gate valves up the line before they were actually able to stop the water from flowing, so it's a, a safety issue, it's a, a cost issue, you know, it, it solves a lot of problems, so that's gonna really help in, in the long run. Two questions, this one, Sue, so the back billing was supposed to be up and running by, by today, are we, did we make any progress on that?
My update for council on that is that we are working hard to meet that, I know that was something that was supposed to be a, a deadline for today, however, the issues that we're finding with that is that it, it's not just a simple fix where you can set the rate and the term, and we just go out and plug that into the addresses, you've had people that have moved away, and you have new owners in that house, those owners don't want to be stuck with the back billing issue, Pam, I don't know if you wanted to add any more to that, but it, it's something that staff is working on, we just do not have that done in the two-week timeframe, so we have been working at addressing this, but it's gonna take us longer than the two weeks.
And we've also been in contact with BSNA on it, too, because we have found a couple more, that even though we changed the one-and-a-half inch meter to the five and the one, it's still not, it's still not correct, so we've been in contact with them, and I've been talking to them about a couple of them, so it's something we're working on, we've been working on, but with people moving, we give them a final bill at that time, so we, you know, not knowing back at the time they got the final, that's what we're running into a lot of them, and houses are flipping quickly, so, but we are working on it, we're, we've got the letter almost prepared, ready to go, it's just a matter of finishing up our spreadsheet and making sure we have everything in there.
Right.
So probably about another two weeks, at least, and plus, I've been working on budget, too, so, in between that.
All right, and then the, the last question is for the, for the city attorney, if there's, if there's any update on the, the week from the closed-door session?
Yeah, I can address that, so I did turn that over to the state attorney general's office.
Just to be clear, since no one might not know what you're talking about, just
Well, there was, there was an email that was sent to council from a resident discussing content of our closed session, or purportedly content in our closed session, that, that issue that the resident raised, specifically about her, her property issue, we've, we met last Thursday with that, and are, have addressed that, we, Mr. Diamond's gonna be sending out enforcement letters, because we did identify the, the responsible party for that overgrowth, it's not actually the city, it's the adjacent property owner that's responsible for maintenance of the right-of-way, that is being fixed. With respect to the Open Meetings Act violation, that has been, the, the state attorney general has been notified, and it has been turned over to them, they vindicated they're launching an investigation, and I'll keep you guys apprised of, of your information.
That's all I have, thanks.
Was there any other comments? Or none? City attorney, city administrator, you have anything?
Nothing for me this evening.
All right, well then, I'll
One thing, I, just so you all know, I will be taking tomorrow off, just, it's my birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
You asked me to, I don't say that to get happy birthday from you, but you asked me to let you know, so I'm letting you know.
I, I didn't recall we got birthdays off, but anyway, oh, I was joking, I would take a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved, and second, have a great night, thanks for your patience.